It's three minutes after three, we'll start with roll call attendance, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here.
And Councilmembers Burnt and Borton are absent.
Thank you. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Item five R has been requested to be removed from the consent agenda, will become six A, and with that, I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
May I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. I have several proclamations and I'm going to move to the podium, and our first one is Fire Prevention Month, so I will ask Pam to join me and anyone she would like to include with her. Come on up.
Oh, yeah.
Sparky wants to high five. Say hello to Sparky.
Fist bump.
Fist bump there, those kind of things.
I don't want to hurt you.
Spark is rugged.
Come on, Dean, you could have participated.
We are going to do the proclamation today for Fire Prevention Month, and Fire Prevention Month is an opportunity that we have here in the city of Meridian to highly educate the community, if you will. We are taking our crews and going into the schools and educating on this year's theme, which is look, listen, and learn. Fires happen everywhere, and with that theme, what we're hoping to put across to the children and to the families in Meridian is to be very situationally aware of the things around us that can cause fire so that we can stop fire before they start. And so I have a whole crew of people here from the Meridian Fire Department that I'd like to thank because this is an opportunity this month for us to be out doing a lot of education, and we're very, very busy. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't invite you all to our open house that's this coming Saturday from 10 to 2. It's an opportunity for us to really showcase a lot of the things that we do, from everything from vehicle extrication to fighting fire to an actual code, you know, to show a code demonstration to lifting up our ladder truck. Those are all tools that we have in our toolbox that we like to share with the public, and this gives us an opportunity to do that. And this is a joint effort from the Meridian Fire Department and the Meridian Police Department. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Tammy. Thank you.
Okay, so I will read the proclamation and I'll present it to Pam or Sparky, whoever wants to receive it. Whereas the city of Meridian is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both nationally and locally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas Meridian's first responders are dedicated to reduce the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention education, and whereas Meridian's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, and whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Month theme, look, listen, learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere, effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer from fire. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Fire Prevention Month in the city of Meridian, and call upon the community to heed the important safety message of using all of our senses to protect citizens from fire. And we appreciate everything that our fire prevention office and our firefighters do every day to be proactive and preventative in protecting our citizens from this serious threat. So thank you, Pam, for what you and your team do, and we appreciate all of that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Do you mind if I introduce Herb? I am so sorry. Herb, can you turn around? This is Herb Griffin. He is a new member to our team, so, so proud to have him aboard, and thank you, City Council, for bringing him on full time.
Our next proclamation is Cyber Security Awareness Month, and I'll ask Dave Tiddy to come up and join us and maybe kind of initiate the first comments in why this is so important.
So the city of Meridian is partnering with the Department of Homeland Security and providing awareness to our community about cybersecurity awareness, so this is National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. This is really an effort to bring awareness to everybody in our community about how important cybersecurity is for our nation, but also our own community. As you know, everyone uses technology nowadays, you're on the internet, you're banking, you're everything, and it is all, all of our responsibilities to keep that secure and to make sure that we're doing the best we can to use best practices and standards. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
And, and really, our system is as secure as our weakest link, and so we all have to take this very serious. Whereas Americans are spending more time online than ever before, as more people use the internet for online shopping, banking, financial management, socializing, and they also expose themselves to increased cyber risks. And whereas cybersecurity is not just a responsibility of governments, companies, groups, or individuals, everyone shares a responsibility for cybersecurity. Whereas October is National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, a time to focus on how cybersecurity is a shared responsibility that affects all Americans and to raise awareness about the importance of cybersecurity for everyone. And whereas the city of Meridian is joining the Department of Homeland Security, the National Cybersecurity Alliance, and others to raise cybersecurity awareness across the nation to support the overarching theme of cybersecurity is our shared responsibility, and we all must work together to improve our nation's cybersecurity. And whereas during the month of October and every day, we can all follow these simple online safety tips from DHS. Enable stronger authentication, make your passwords long and not memorable. I'm sorry, I threw that one in, if that's even a word. Make them long and strong. Do not share your passwords. Keep a clean machine, share with care, and secure your Wi-Fi network. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, proclaim the month of October 2018 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Meridian, and call upon our community to join me in recognizing how serious cybersecurity is and the steps each of us can take to present or to protect ourselves and our community. So Dave, thank you to you and your team for everything you do to protect the system the city has and to educate our community on how we can all protect ourselves.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
With the notation of moving item five R to six A, I move we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as change. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item six A is the former five R, and that is the approval of the cooperative agreement between the city and VRT for the annual dues and service contribution.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think Councilmember Borton wasn't here, but he had some questions that had been raised about the dollar amount, so I've, I've pulled together those line items just to address that, put it on the record. His question was about the $139,539 and its inclusion in the $295,000. The way that's broken down is that is $41,011 for the annual VRT assessment, $57,333 for the limited stop service, $32,935 for the express service, and the additional inter-county route of $5,260. The remaining amount will be used, is used for the harvest transit program and for the senior transportation program. So, just so everyone's aware, that's where the dollars are breaking down. It's not $139,000 additional dollars, it's just that amount being separated out from the inclusion of the total assessment from VRT.
Thank you for that detail. Any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I move that we approve item six A, approval of the cooperative agreement between the city and VRT for annual dues and service contribution for not to exceed amount of $295,020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item seven A is under community items presentations, and I don't know who is going to do this. Pam, are, are you going to introduce this? Light My Fire is an organization that is in front of us on a, an annual basis. They raise a lot of money for burnout funds and other activities. They raise an extraordinary amount that really helps our community and our, our fire department. So Pam, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You did a great job with explaining exactly who these amazing people are. I'd like to introduce to you, this, these folks are part of our board. They're not only serve our board, but they also serve on the committee as well. And so Steve Salee is the president of our board. Mary Calhoun is the, I would say, the president of our group as far as our, you know, our fundraising. And then Andrea Bradshaw is the vice president that, that works through that as well. So they are representing a very large group of people, of volunteers, and today they have something, I think, incredible for us. So I'll turn it over to, I think, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you. It is a huge pleasure to be here, and today is a really great day for us because we get to give you money.
And it's a great day for us, too.
Yay. So 2018 marked our 25th anniversary, and we did cheers for 25 years and was able to really bring in a lot more money this year. And this marked during that 25-year span, we've almost reached $450,000 that has been donated, so we were short by about $4,600. So it's pretty amazing. Bob and Judy Ricketts are ones, are, have been here since the very beginning, and so they're watching a grandson at boot camp graduate today, so it's pretty exciting for them. So we're sad that they're not here, but we'll remember them because they've been here from the beginning. And Pam already introduced our committee members, and so anyway, this year we were able to raise $45,000 at our dinner auction and also our golf tournament, and the donation is a 40/60 split between Meridian and Boise, and so today we get to give away $18,000. And so if Chief Butterfield would come up. To you, I want to present $10,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome, which will automatically be doubled through that grant program that you have, which is a match, $20,000.
Thank you so much.
And then if Battalion Roundtree, Battalion Chief Roundtree would like to come up. General.
No, Jaren's coming too.
And Jaren Jones. Awesome. So for you guys, we have $8,000 for the burnout fund. Yay. So in 2019, we are going to have another gala event, and we're hoping to bring that up to $50,000 if we can, and so we want to invite you to attend. We have the invitations here for the save the date, and it's going to be the day after Valentine's Day, so it's "That's amore."
That's amore. Thank you. Well, yes, so now those that got up out of their seats to applaud, we expect you in the seats of this event.
I just want to say thank you again, and thank you to this amazing group. So I've been working with them for 13 years now, and I can just tell you that they have so much love for this that they do and for the community, and I'm just blown away year after year after year of just how, you know, how awesome the packages are, the donations from the community is, and how much they rally around not only public education, but around our burnout fund. So it, all of it, 100% of the money that we make goes back into the community of Meridian and Boise, and I think that's amazing, just absolutely amazing that we have people who would do that for us. So thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Well, and these are very familiar faces that have been doing this probably as long as the Ricketts have. It is a labor of love to put on the auction event. I haven't been to the golf event. You don't want me to. But the auction is a wonderful evening, full of a lot of energy, good food, good conversations, and, and as Pam mentioned, a lot of generous donations from the community that supports our, our fire prevention and our fire service activities. So we do hope to, to get elected officials there. It does show that support, and I know it goes a long way in saying how important your activities are. So thank you, you, your team, your group knows how to have fun. That is obvious.
Yes.
So thank you for your generosity and, and supporting our activities as well. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven B is under our Compass of Review and Update. Good afternoon. I, I'm so used to saying good evening, so I actually remembered this time.
Good afternoon to all of you. We are part of the Compass Resource Development Team.
If you'll please introduce yourself and, and pull the mic a little closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We are part of the Compass Resource Development Team. I'm Kathy Parker. This is Toni Tisdale. She's our team leader. And our job is to bring as much funding into our region for transportation projects as possible, and our region is both Ada and Canyon Counties. So who is Compass and why do we exist? Compass is the forum for regional collaboration in southwest Idaho that helps maintain a healthy and economically vibrant region, offering people choices in how and where they live, work, play, and travel. And the mission of Compass is to conduct regional planning, facilitate coordination and cooperation, serve as a source of information and expertise on issues affecting southwest Idaho, and assist member agencies in accessing funding to accomplish local and regional goals. I promise I'm not going to read all of them. So who are we? Compass is an association of cities, counties, highway districts, and other agencies who plan together for the future of Ada and Canyon Counties. We are our members. Currently, we have 19 general members, you are one, five special members, and three ex-official members. Our board is made up of representatives, primarily elected officials, from each of our member agencies, and the board meets bimonthly and provides policy direction on the future of Ada and Canyon Counties. Our board also plays a strategic role in planning activities in our region, including oversight of the Long Range Transportation Plan, which is completed every four years, and also the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, which programs projects within the various federal funding sources that are available for projects. And they provide input into federal and state policy positions, as well as the Compass Program budget. This is definitely not an exhaustive list, but these are the primary responsibilities of the board. So the board makes decisions based on recommendations of both policy and technical committees, as well as work groups on a variety of topics. And some of those work groups are active transportation, demographic advisory, freight advisory, rails with trails, public transportation, all kinds of different transportation-related groups. We are two of the 18 Compass staff assigned to various departments to provide services, activities, and functions for our members. So exactly what does Compass do? Our goals are to plan, implement, provide technical expertise, and facilitate, and we'll go into those a little more in just a second. So through a joint powers agreement, Compass is tasked to conduct and coordinate services as they relate to both planning and regulatory responsibilities in several areas that you see listed here, all in light of their relationship with transportation. Compass is a metropolitan planning organization, or MPO. Why and how are MPOs formed? They're federally required for any urbanized area with a population greater than 50,000, and they're designated by the governor in agreement with local units of government, and the MPO must represent at least 75% of the urbanized area's population. Compass is somewhat unique in that we represent two urbanized areas, both Nampa and Boise. That's in addition to the entire rural area of Ada and Canyon Counties. And because those two urbanized areas fall into two different categories because of their size, they are eligible for different funding sources. So membership in Compass definitely has its benefits. Pass it off here.
So first and foremost, you get a seat at the table as regional planning and policies are discussed. The board's decisions affect the regional transportation system and affect the quality of life for the, the residents of the Treasure Valley, as well as those who pass through our beautiful region. A few of the primary services Compass provides to its members, and I'll just list a few of them, mapping and GIS, orthophotography. We also have grant assistance, including grant writing, and also bicycle and pedestrian encounters, just to name a few of them. Some of the hot topics currently being addressed by the Compass Board are the regional transportation priorities, both long-term and short-term, insufficient funding to meet the needs of our member agencies, lack of dedicated funding for public transportation, as well as ensuring active transportation or the bicycle and pedestrian community have a safe access to our regional facilities. So how do we conduct ongoing planning while simultaneously addressing these hot topics? You've seen these before. We plan, implement, provide technical expertise, and facilitate, so now let's dig into each of one, each of those. Our planning team is led by Lisa Edconan. Her primary responsibility is to oversee the Long Range Transportation Plan that's known as Communities in Motion 2040, or soon to be 2042.0, as our Compass Board is expected to adopt the new plan by the end of the year. This plan for the future transportation system is based on the previous vision and goals of Communities in Motion 2040. There are eight planning elements incorporated into the Long Range Plan as each relates to transportation. Those elements include land use, housing, farmland, open space, health, community infrastructure, and economic development. In the past, we really only looked at housing and transportation, so we're looking at a whole bigger picture as all those things relate to how transportation is developed. Part of the plan consists of identifying and prioritizing both funded and unfunded projects to meet both the short-term and long-term needs, taking into consideration the current status of the transportation system, and what improvements need to be done to accommodate the growth by 2040. And we do expect that by 2040, the two-county population will be over a million people. The plan not only identifies regional needs, but establishes goals, performance measures, and targets, which provides the foundation for determining where progress is being made and what parts of the system need more attention. Long-range planning for our transportation system is carried out by looking through the lenses of four transportation components. Those are roadways, bicycle pedestrian, public transportation, and freight, also taking into consideration those other eight elements that we just talked about, economic development, housing, open space, all of those. This map shows where the greatest long-term needs exist. The blue lines you see here are considered long-term funded projects, and the orange lines are considered still unfunded. We do encourage you to contact us at any time if you have questions about the transportation needs, or work through the mayor or Caleb, they serve on our board and committee. Compass does performance-based planning using a performance measure framework. We measure how well proposed projects align with the goals of our Long Range Plan and use this information to make informed decisions. But planning isn't the only way we help our members move the needle on Communities in Motion. We also provide data and feedback to assist in their decision-making process. Compass provides technical expertise to help measure projects. The Technical Services Team is led by Mary Ann Waldinger. She's our modeler, that is, models that help determine the impact of projects. Compass gathers heaps of data, which is assembled by our technical team for use in local and long-range planning. We serve as a clearinghouse and provide analysis through modeling and mapping of transportation-related data. Compass also serves, provides analysis of proposed new developments by conducting reviews for local jurisdictions that demonstrate whether these developments are consistent with the goals and vision of Communities in Motion 2040, and that can be helpful in the local decision-making process. I hope that they all are using those. This process also informs the Compass demographic estimates and forecasting process. The population estimates are made available to cities, counties, and others, and the forecast demographics includes population, households, and jobs, and those are fed into the models and the mapping that we use in transportation planning. The population currently is, for both counties, is about 690,000. Boise, of course, is the largest city in the area at 232,000. Meridian, as you know, just passed 100,000 at 106,000, and Nampa is shortly behind at 98,000, but the entire region is seeing growth. Compass has also served as a mapping resource for several decades. Transportation activities necessitate the development of maps for analysis, review, and public display, and geographic information systems allow for spatial data analysis to support local planning efforts. In addition to being a regional data center, Compass also brought together a group of regional agencies for a multi-agency orthophotography project starting in 2000, and that flight has been flown every three years since, the last one in 2016, so the next flight is scheduled for 2019. All the staff on our technical resources team works very closely with our communication team to bring all this data to the public in a way that's understandable. So another group of services that Compass provides is facilitation, and that group is led by Amy Luft. As stated previously, Compass is the forum for regional collaboration, where the cities, counties, highway districts, ITD, and others come together to make decisions in the best interest of the region and its residents, but we also ensure collaboration with the residents themselves. Through our outreach team, we provide outreach, which takes many forms, such as presentations like this. We have Leadership in Motion awards, which are presented to individuals, agencies, and leaders of our community when they have projects, and help reach the goals of Communities in Motion. We also have educational series where we bring national speakers in to speak about transportation-related themes. Those are done both for the general public as well as your technical staff, and they also oversee a robust public involvement process. And they also oversee a robust public involvement process for when we have projects, including hosting public open houses, which we happen to have one across the street for Communities in Motion today.
So, another role Compass plays, a very important one, because that's what our team does, we implement the Long Range Transportation Plan. Our team is led by Tony, and we manage three federal programs and two local programs, and those that fund our members' projects. And we're constantly looking for new funding sources, because, as you all know, there's not nearly enough funding to go around for all of the needs in the region. So, we're currently focused on maintaining what we have, trying to increase funding, and then securing those additional resources. We have been in a maintenance mode in the Treasure Valley for a long time, but growth is starting to catch up with us, so we have been recently able to add some capacity and widening projects, to try to keep up with that growth. But maintenance is still our primary focus. We're trying to keep the roads we have in good shape, because, as you all know, they cost a lot less to keep them that way than it is to try to fix one that has deteriorated. And our resource development team works really hard to secure funding and find those resources to fund all of our members' projects. Our goal is to bring as much funding as possible into our area. And the first step in our plan is to figure out what our members' needs are, and we only know if you tell us. To help meet those needs, Compass has put together a funding application guide for your staff, its directions on how to fill out an application for funding. They're submitted to us, then, by each jurisdiction, and then we match them with available funding sources, as far down the list as we can go. And while some of the projects do get programmed for funding, many others do not. All the project applications that we receive in any given year go into what we call our Resource Development Plan, and that's basically the marching orders for our resource development team. We work all year long on all those projects to try to find ways to fund them. So, all the jurisdictions that do have those many projects that didn't get funded, we frequently notify all of our members about miscellaneous funding sources that become available throughout the year. We send out a funding news email once or twice a month with all different, a variety of funding sources. Many of them are small, but sometimes a little bit goes a long way. And in addition to trying to find sources for you, we can provide lots of other types of grant assistance. We can help you determine whether you're eligible for a grant. We can help you write a grant. We can provide a review of a grant that you've put together if you want another set of eyes on it. Anything grant-related, we can help you with. So, this is one example of the ninety-million-dollar grant that ITD recently got for Interstate Eighty-four between Franklin Boulevard and Cartridge Road, was a team effort between our staff and ITD. And so, we can't guarantee we're going to get ninety million for you, but we'll do our best to get as much as we can. So, our locally managed federal program and two local programs, those are the CIM for Communities in Motion Implementation Grant Program, and the Project Development Program, they fund our region's top-ranked projects. And we continue to work with even with our members on even funded projects to help facilitate documentation and helping to make sure that they can be completed within the required timeframes. One example of a project funded with the CIM Implementation Grant are the City of Garden City's Wayfinding Signs. They were looking at ways to improve walking and biking between their businesses. And one example of the Project Development Program is the completion of a pre-concept report for the Eagle Road Corridor pathway, to construct a continuous multi-use pathway along the east side of Eagle Road. Any of you who have looked at that, or even have been there, know that the sidewalk just stops in many areas, and there's no continuous pathway there. And last but not least, for the funding programs that Compass manages, is the array of federal aid programs that fund those top-ranked projects. Traditionally, like I said, much of that funding has been focused on maintenance, and then also some of the funding that we get is dedicated specifically for public transportation. But all the projects that are programmed for funding, and the TIP is funded out to five and even six years, they must be consistent with the Long Range Plan that we talked about, so you can kind of see how all of these fit together. So, we've covered the programs that Compass manages, but we don't want you to forget about all the other funding sources out there that we can help you access. We really urge you to reach out to us, because we'll do everything we can to help you find a grant, write a grant, find partners for a grant, you name it. We'll do anything we can to help. The top right, the Build Grant in this picture, that's where the ninety million dollars for ITD came from. It's not a traditional, every-year federal funding source. So, we've covered that Compass is an association of local governments that facilitates regional cooperation and serves as a regional technical resource. In addition, we work hard to provide support for projects that meet both local and regional needs, and conduct long-range planning resulting in Communities in Motion 2040, which is our plan for the future of the Treasure Valley. And that is a Tony photo.
So, we did want to open for discussion, but let me cover, we've got, these are the projects we have in the Resource Development Plan right now. The projects at the top are the projects that the city applied for last year, and then we also included focus areas, and those are a little bit broader, things that you still have a focus on, but maybe don't have an application in for that. And the reason for that is because as we look for a grant, if you've ever dug through grant materials, you always find what you're not looking for. So, the more information that we know is a need, the better we can help you with your needs and get them funded. And then these are the projects that we have in the federal program, in the TIP, right now, for the city. And so, we wanted to open for discussion, any projects that you know are coming up, or I just popped my pen, any projects that you know of that are coming, anything that we can help you with, or questions that we can help you with, and we'd like to get that process started with the applications.
Thank you, Tony. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just a question and some commentary. Do you know, I didn't prepare you for this, but how much you spend on broadcast advertising in a year?
I, it's in our budget. I can get that for you. I will follow up, so I can find out how we do on broadcasts.
Madam Mayor, the reason I ask is, you know, whether that's coming from somebody else, or whether it's coming from the dues that the cities pay, or, you know, other taxpayer-funded sources. That, it was about a year ago, maybe it was a little longer, but I remember it running for a long time, there was an ad that said if just every citizen would pay two dollars a day extra in taxes, that we could fund all of the road projects any of us could ever dream of. Well, that'd be forty-four-hundred dollars a year for my family. And so, if I'm paying tax dollars to the city who's then going to Compass to then run ads to tell me I'm not paying anywhere near enough taxes, it's just frustrating as a citizen. So, really, that's my big gripe with Compass, is I'm tired of paying people to tell me that I'm not paying enough.
Okay. Yeah, that's another question. Other questions from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'm gun-shy, because I don't have a question either. I just wanted to thank.
I just didn't want Tony to feel like she had to respond.
No, I don't think she needs to either, and she doesn't need to respond to this either, but Ms. Tisdale participates.
Can you pull that?
As an ex-officio member of our Transportation Commission, and I've appreciated your expertise and feedback in that committee. I know that our committee members do as well, where we have a citizen-led Transportation Commission. Having true experts in the room to provide that expertise has been very valuable, so I just wanted to say thank you. And no, you don't need to respond either.
Thank you.
You know, Tony, I think what was helpful in your presentation is you have talked, you noted Garden City's Wayfinding Sign Program. I think it'd be great if our Parks Department or Parks Commission knew more about that. And it's been a while since we've talked about the pedestrian improvements needed on Eagle Road, and it would probably be helpful to this council to see what is anticipated and envisioned, so have, bringing an update back on that. I think they are aware of the Railway Trail pathway and some of the activities, and I know in 2019, there are some discussions that are moving forward, so making sure that you come back and bring an update. But it is helpful to know what other cities are requesting, to even have an idea of what might be an opportunity for our community, because it seems that our community doesn't see some of these activities, like you saw in the Eagle Road Corridor Pathway Project, and how they've been working to connect the green belt. We would like to see more of those projects, and more maybe safer routes to school that I am working with ACHD and Compass that come about over in the city of Boise. And I know that depends on West Ada School District to get the information to Compass, but those are the kind of things that would be helpful for us to know more about.
Okay. We do have the first phase on the Eagle Road pedestrian improvements. It's in the TIP. It's in an out year. I think it's in, is it currently in PD right now? So, it's working its way up. I think design would start in the next couple of years. And it is a fairly expensive project, so it's probably going to take a lot of phases to get Eagle Road funded. And we are working with Caleb, as well as ITD. Caleb's asked me to get a meeting together about right-of-way issues and maintenance issues, so we will be working on that soon as well. And before I leave, I do want to introduce Daniel Hernandez, Daniel Wade. He's our newest employee, and he started a week ago, so this is all new to him. But we do have some help now, and anyway, we do want to work with your staff. It's a pleasure to work with them. We always have good relationship with the City of Meridian, and we do want to help bring more money into the region. And the more we know what your needs are, the better we can help, and we'll turn it out to say two dollars a person anymore.
Thank you, Tony. And I guess one more thing is, I was traveling down State Street last week. It's so nice to see the pathway that runs parallel to that. As we look at Chindon, or Highway Sixteen, I-84 improvements, that pathway connectivity, certainly from city survey results, our citizens would like to see more off-road, detached bicycle and pedestrian opportunities, that as those road improvements are talked about, that that's also one of the things that is part of those discussions.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Anything further from counsel? Thank you. And as Councilman Kavner mentioned, thank you for your involvement in the discussions we have at a city level, too.
Absolutely. I enjoy them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, item eight C is an update under the Fire Station Number Six, and I assume that Charlie is very excited about giving the next update. Yes?
Are we moving our?
Oh, I guess I skipped Finance, huh? I didn't do that on purpose.
I think we, MDC and Lyme.
Oh, gosh. I did a whole section.
As excited as I am to hear from Chief Butterfield.
Oh, I guess that is MDC. I skipped a whole section.
I'm not going to go on this one.
We were just going to save the best for last, really.
Of course. Well, I figure you all have seen me so much lately, I thought you might be kind of sick of me, which, that's okay, too. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, for the record. I'm Ashley Squires. I am the administrator for Meridian Development Corporation. I just served my eighth, had my eighth anniversary with MDC as of October one. Happy to be here. My mailing address is 104 East Fairview Avenue, number 239, here in Meridian. In your packet is a detailed report that was supporting information that gives all the details as to what we've been up to this last quarter. Again, you've seen us a lot lately, so you kind of know what we've been up to, at least in some of this, but I'm going to hit some highlights. I'm not going to hit all of this, and then I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have. As the council approved the purchase prize for Old City Hall at last week's meeting, we are going to be reviewing and discussing the development agreement and the purchase and sale agreement tomorrow morning at our MDC meeting, barring that there's any issues with this, which I don't think there will be. This will be back in front of your agenda fairly quickly in the next coming weeks, so we're excited about that. Thank you for this partnership. It's important for our downtown. Our goal is to transfer, have the transfer completed by February of 2019, and ground being broken in March. So, again, thank you for this. Second, I provided an update as to the status of the Union Pacific lease application. There's not much to report. I wish there were. I'm so sorry. I've been pushing. But in recent discussions with UP staff, about a week and a half ago, they've had a lot of internal chaos and reorganization. Luckily, we still have our person for Idaho. He, his district has changed a little bit. He was initially Idaho, Montana, Wyoming. He is now Idaho, Oregon, and Washington, so he's trying to get up to speed. His boss is new as well, too. So, we talked about trying to get the first round of comments back on our lease application, which I've included all of that in this packet as well. By the end of this calendar year, he knows we're anxious and want to start moving forward. We also were able to give him an update on the Frontier Tire structure. Many of you know that that has been complicated. The structure owner did not have the underlying ground, and so UP and the structure owner owed back taxes to 2011. And so, UP was in a little bit of a pickle, because they no longer have a lease with these folks. They went, the folks went through bankruptcy court. So, after a little bit of research and trying to figure out how do we solve this issue, legal counsel for MDC and myself met with the county commissioners for Ada County. The county commissioners have waived the tax, back taxes for the structure. UP is now going to go back to that structure owner and say, you either need to enter into a new lease, or you need to move or demolish your structure. And so, we're hoping that we can find a solution that's amicable for everybody in order to move that forward as well. I know there's been a lot of interest in that structure. We've also been working to alleviate the nine-mile floodplain issue, as some of you all know, that is basically encompassing most of the properties between the rail line and Franklin Road. The only property in the draft 2016 map that is out of it is Eric Davis's property, the Retail West property, on the immediate south side of Main Street, and the railroad tracks and the east side of Main Street, excuse me. I don't really have much to report, other than to say, an update from what you all have in your packets on Friday. FEMA called us and said that they were going to be able to get the draft modeling that we need for the compromise that we've come to for the flows. Initially, they were saying with the draft 2016 maps, the flows were going to be about one-hundred-and-forty-six CFS, which is substantial and a huge increase. Our engineer for MDC looked at it, took it down from a thirty-thousand-foot level to the ten-thousand-foot level, and said, no, it should be at eighty CFS, which is a huge difference. We've been able to split the difference in our favor a little bit, and we've agreed upon ninety-eight CFS. FEMA is at no cost to us remodeling and redoing their hydraulic model. Once we receive that, we can give that to MDC's engineer. They can look at it, figure out what improvements are needed to get the properties out of the floodplain, or at least the majority, and what those costs are going to be. And so, our goal is to have all of that information to be able to present back to the city, hopefully next spring. So, fingers crossed. Also in your packets, I've included the most recent update for the Ten Mile Urban Rental District. Brighton Corporation, it used to be every month, now it's about quarterly as well, too, provides us an update, including all the land use decisions, entitlements, building permits that are being pulled, new leases. All of that is in your packet, along with some of the updated photos. We're anticipating being able to give our first TIF reimbursement to Brighton Corporation by the end of this year, so excited about that. We also heard rumors that the other property owner in that district is looking at potentially coming forth with a development plan. We have not seen anything to date, obviously. We'll be in conversation with you once we know a little bit more about that. And lastly, and sadly, MDC has been unsuccessful in obtaining bids, or appropriate bids, I should say, for the Carlton Avenue, East Fifth Street, CDPG sidewalk project. In May, we put it out to bid, we did not receive a single bid. We met with staff. Caleb's been awesome to work with. We decided we're going to go back out to bid in August. We left it open until October one. As you can see in your report, we received four bids. We have a budget of a construction- We have a budget of, a construction budget of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. The lowest of the four bids is more than double that. So Caleb and a representative from finance and I met on Thursday last week. We're going to recommend to our board tomorrow to reject all the bids, go back out to bid in December, leave it open until the end of January, and fingers crossed, hopefully get more reasonable bids. In the meantime, Caleb and I are going to be working on alternative plans and alternative funding sources in order to supplement, be able to bridge the gap, because this is a very important project for our downtown. Um, so fingers crossed that we can figure that out. So as you can see, there's, there's a number of other projects that we've been engaged in, but I'm going to stop here and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ashley. Uh, council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Sir, a comment and a question. Appreciate the very thorough report. Wasn't aware of the public outreach videos that MDC had done, had a chance to, to watch those, very well done. Is there a, a plan to, or communication plan associated with that to promote downtown? Do those just live on the website? Talk to me a little bit more about that particular process and the goals you hope to attain.
So they live on the website. We also have distributed those to our partner agencies, including the city. I have not seen that go live on the city's website at this point in time, um, so I'm not sure what that protocol may be. But they do live on the Boise Valley Economic Partnership website, the Chamber website, and I'm going to forget, the Downtown Business Association website as well too. We've sent out a couple of blasts, we've promoted through LinkedIn and other means, especially surrounding the ribbon cutting and, or at least the groundbreaking for the Main and Broadway, uh, block project. I think we'll do an even bigger announcement surrounding those, but they have been widely distributed and viewed.
Madam Mayor, and for, for council, I'd encourage you to, to check them out. Specifically, there's one that has downtown business owners talking about why they choose downtown Meridian that I thought is really compelling. And I knew some of those voices, but not all of them, and so I thought you did a great job of capturing kind of the spirit of, of downtown. Uh, additional question, if I may, Madam Mayor. I've been told two different things, so I'm hoping you can provide some clarification about debt on the buildings that are part of this redevelopment project. I've been told there isn't debt, I've been told there is debt, I've been told there is debt, but that the board is working to address it. So I just figured that you might be able just to give me some clarification about what is reality, so that I know when I'm asked that I can respond confidently.
So in two thousand and ten, with the Compass VRT project, uh, the board at that time chose to enter into a three-way partnership with MDC, Compass and Valley Regional Transit to be able to fund that project. It was going to be a catalyst project for downtown. Um, we also rolled in the loans for seven oh three and seven thirteen into the overall project as well too. Compass and Valley Regional Transit's portion unfortunately did not pay fully for the cost of the building. And so yes, there is some debt. As of the end of this fiscal year, so at the September thirtieth, I believe we have about three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in debt. Uh, based on our current payments, payment, payment plan, we are poised to pay that off in March twenty twenty-two. We talk about this every time, uh, through the budgeting process, we're very transparent about that. Um, I think obviously with what is happening with the Main and Broadway project, with the Compass VRT building, they're solid investments for our downtown. Um, we do and are looking at the possibility, depending on how some projects may go this year, to maybe pay that off a little early. But again, we're not trying to restrict funds so much by paying that off in order not to be able to do other projects that are more immediate for this downtown.
Right, Madam Mayor, follow-up. No additional debt then on seven oh two or seven thirteen?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, was it seven oh three you said is the one?
Seven oh three.
Which is one of the, Josh's buildings, right? So now we have two buildings in downtown Meridian that have debt on them that the taxpayers are paying the debt on, but they don't actually own the buildings.
They have, the debt was rolled into the Compass VRT loan, yes. And that was debt taken in place in two thousand six, two thousand seven.
So that debt is on VRT building, not on those two?
Yes, it was rolled into that VRT loan.
Madam Mayor, so there's only one building?
Yes.
So, okay.
It was, it was three loans rolled into one.
I mean, not that that's good, horrible, um, but when you have, never mind.
Any, any other questions from council?
How'd you get the county commissioners to forgive the taxes?
We asked them to.
You commanded for that, that's pretty, pretty remarkable.
We, we asked for a meeting, we had a meeting, and we got an email two days later that said, this is what we did.
Pretty impressive.
Okay, anything further? We appreciate you coming and, and giving an update and, and look forward to your next one.
Yeah, this has been really good, really good.
Thank you. Okay, I won't skip a handful of others. Um, next up is, I was so excited about Charlie's update, I just couldn't stand myself. Okay, seven D is under our Lime Bike update. And for the record, Councilwoman Borton has joined us. I know our city clerk does know that. But for everyone viewing in our viewing audience, he is here. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, after last week's meeting, we had a meeting last week in the mayor's office, myself, members of the police department, including Chief Levy, uh, Robert Simison from the mayor's staff. We met with Lime Bike representatives, Aaron Kendall, or is it, I think it's, it's Kendall, yes. Sorry, Aaron Kendall. Uh, they had a couple of representatives on the phone, as well as representatives from Bird, another competing rideshare program that uses a similar model to Lime. Um, good news to report, it was a very productive meeting, very positive, uh, conversation by all parties. Um, a couple of things that are happening, you may or may not be aware of. Uh, Lime and Bird are both launching a program in Boise as of next week. Uh, they're each going to be putting approximately two hundred and fifty scooters out in the downtown core of Boise between BSU, the downtown area, the Capitol Building. Um, Boise did implement an ordinance primarily mostly to add that type of device into their bicycle ordinance, so that it was clear that it was covered under their bike ordinances. Their ordinances are slightly different there, they do allow bike riding on the sidewalk there. Even these motorized scooters are allowed on the sidewalk in certain areas. Uh, so they're excited about that launch, and we were excited because it gives us an opportunity to see how this can be done differently. Um, they've done a little bit more outreach over there, they have worked with the cities a little closer. Um, they have been working with ACHD to get an agreement with ACHD, which they hadn't done here. So what we asked them was, we'd like to pause to get all of these pieces in place. We'd like to see how this works in Boise and what happens with this rollout. We would like to evaluate Boise's ordinances and see if maybe now, based on what little impact or little experience we've had, that maybe there are some of the things in Boise's ordinance that might be helpful in a rollout here. Uh, with the weather, obviously the biggest factor on this type of devices, um, there is a window where they are either used very sparingly or not at all because of the weather. And so Lime Bike was agreeable to all of that, they'd like to work with us closer, they'd like to work with police, especially because that's where the impact of these devices end up, with code enforcement and patrol officers and things like that. We want to find safe places for them to go, safe places for them to get there, um, how we can roll this out in a better fashion so the public's aware what it is. We have received a number of concerned emails or phone calls from the public and business owners on how these are being implemented, so we'd like to make sure that they're part of the conversation. Lime has spoken with, um, the Downtown Business Association, uh, as well, to again, get them on board as to how this can work and be of value to the downtown businesses. They basically would like a, a city representative to work with through the next few months. We targeted March fifteenth, and it really was not a hard date. It was more of, let's figure out how long will it take us to evaluate this, get a, a real rollout plan, get a real, uh, public outreach plan together, evaluate those ordinances, bring those back to you if that's necessary, if we think that's where we need to go. Using the weather as a factor, figuring we, if we, we could be pretty ambitious and get a lot of this groundwork done over the next couple of months. And then if, again, depending on the weather, the winter, if it's light, maybe they could launch even before that, um, if it makes the most sense to everybody, including all of you. Um, again, they were on board with all of it, they were very agreeable, they've done some demos, they're going to do some more demos. Uh, we think that's a good way to again, introduce the public to this concept. They did one last weekend at, um, Centennial Park, they're going to be part of trunk or treat. And so they want to make, do some outreach so that people can use them a little bit, use it in a small window of time so that we can introduce it, but not necessarily just keep flooding the market with them, but use them in a more controlled way, so people can understand how these work and how they can work. At the same time where we're looking for locations for them to be, like between here and the parks, between here and the, the business centers and things like that. Again, all of it was very positive, all of it was very receptive to Lime, uh, to do that and to make this a more successful launch here in the next few months.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I'm, I'm not sure who this question's for. Bill and I had a chance to talk earlier this afternoon. Um, I, I was surprised when I saw a city news release that the city had told Lime that they aren't able to operate in our city until March, before this body had an update. And so I think it brings a bigger conversation about when the city is speaking for the city council and when they're not, and how, it's always challenging when I get a phone call from somebody saying, you guys did what? And I get to say, I don't know what you're talking about. And they said, well, the city just sent something out to say, no Limes in Meridian until March. And so it would be helpful for me to have some understanding as to who, who spoke for the city when they said, no Lime until March, and what that was based on. Because I watched the meeting last week, and I, I don't recall any part of this body saying, no Limes until March. What I heard was, there's some issues that need to be resolved, get your issues resolved, and then, and then we'll take it back up. And so help me understand the timeline as to what's changed and why someone or someones are speaking for the council without us even being updated on it.
I don't think you, that was in response to the council, but for, in response to the conversation that, that this group had, um, based on the instruction of council to, to, um, discuss. So I don't know if Robert or, or you wanted to address that.
So, so Madam Mayor, I mean, it was a date that we discussed at the meeting. Um, and we were trying to, in, in discussing this with Lime and again with Bird. Uh, let me update you about Bird as well. They, what they indicated is they would like to come and locate in the Meridian at some point. They aren't looking to locate here currently. They do plan on getting an agreement with the city when they do. So they were actually very supportive of trying to work out all these kinks ahead of time, because then it probably would be more seamless for them. There's a couple of things that need to occur. They still do not have a license agreement with ACHD, that is necessary. So that takes some time. We wanted some evaluation time of the Boise rollout and how that works. So that was another factor we discussed in, in the conversation. We want a plan on how this is going to be communicated to the public, but we also wanted a plan on where these are going to be on a daily basis, getting parked, because there's a factor that we recognize that it's very difficult for the companies to control is where the users leave these things. And so trying to figure that out, because police end up with the burden of dealing with them in right-of-ways and disable, uh, disability pathways and things like that. So we needed some time to work with police to figure out, how's this going to work, without it becoming a police burden? So taking, and then of course, as I said, the weather being probably the most significant factor of all of those things. That Lime recognized that although they do operate in cold weather climates, like Minnesota, they use as an example, they recognize that when the snow flies, whenever that is, that that really sort of hinders how they do things. So that's a good time to really make all of these types of decisions and discussions made. So trying to relaunch in the, a short window between now and when the snow flies, and then at the same time, while it's, while we've had a lot of pushback and negativity, it, it felt to me, and it felt to, I think, to the people in the room, that it doesn't work to try to do them simultaneously. We need to do it right, which is what we communicated, and all of those things need to be in place to do it right. So trying to just launch it, make it work, Band-Aid it, and then really do the work to make it work. So we picked a target date out there at March, and that was the specific target date we mentioned in the meeting, that they were agreeable to. But we also said, again, we're not hard and fast on March, we're hard and fast on getting this done right. Again, if the weather's good, we have a light winter, February first, fine. I mean, it's not really a date that's critical as much as the pro, the, the process.
Madam Mayor, to, to that point, I, I think that's accurate. We don't want to pick March fifteenth, if they're not ready on March fifteenth.
Correct.
But if they're ready next week, I think that we should be immuneable to letting them operate next week, or somewhere in between. But it's much different between what we heard from you, which is, once they have everything done right, then we're going to be okay with them operating, and us communicating to the public that no Lime until March. Those, two different items. And so I'm still trying to figure out, again, who spoke for the city and, and why that communication was sent out before it was communicated with us as part of our city council update.
I, I can't answer that, I don't have anything to do with that, oh.
Madam Mayor, uh, council, council, Kavner. When I say who spoke from the city, I made the recommendation or suggestion in the meeting that we paused till March. They, they agreed to that from that standpoint. You know, it was not a, a mandate that they do that, but from the council direction that we saw last week, it was clear if they decided to, to continue to operate this week, um, that there was going to be some council members who are not going to be fondly of that decision if they did not. So that is what was discussed in the meeting in that context.
Okay.
And they agreed to that.
Okay.
Today, officially, in writing.
Then we sent a, a release out to say that no Lime until March.
It was included in our city news, yes.
Yeah. To pause operations in Meridian until mid-March. Much different than what was shared with us. Madam Mayor, I, I know we're not at the other agenda items, but to make a note, I, I would like an agenda item scheduled about when staff are speaking for the city. Because I think it's unfair to council members, whether they feel one way or another, to have a staff member represent the entire city, especially on something that is going to be coming before the city council. I know we've had this subject discussed during legislative session about when staff are going and speaking in favor or against laws representing the city. Uh, to me, this feels very similar, and that we had one individual essentially dictate where the city is going to be on this particular issue without it coming before us.
And not having the, the press release in front of me to even respond to that, but, um, I know there's been a lot of media attention to it. And, um, and the notice that when that meeting would occur was last week. So it was, um, certainly an item of interest. The city could have said, well, we can't tell you anything that went on in the meeting until we have it on the public record. I think it was an attempt to a, address the, the questions of the media, and certainly city council can, can, um, weigh in on, on that during this update. But it was an attempt to, um, answer many of the questions that were going on at the time. And it was a result of the, the meeting that, um, ACHD, our law enforcement, our planning and, um, legal teams had with the entities that walked out of that, um, room in agreement with each other, knowing that it would be addressed as well tonight. So, um, you, you can, you can say, we don't care, we don't need to wait until there's an agreement, and you can, um, ask our law enforcement and our planning and ACHD that doesn't have an agreement, um, why they would disagree. But operationally, we have to roll it out. Um, so, uh, that is the experts in the room and, and the, the handshake agreement that was walked out of there. Um, it was out there so that, uh, the public knew it is put on hold, that is the anticipated date, and it can always change in, in this update.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I, I think, kind of to Councilman Kavner's point.
I think kind of the Councilman Cavanagh's point, that email and next door post and everything was posted an hour and 45 minutes before this meeting. And everybody knew, I mean, it was, we were going to be discussing it in today's meeting. I do have it in front of me. And, you know, one tweak to the sentence I think would have satisfied me where it says, "The city has asked Lime to pause operations in Meridian until mid-March." With the press coverage of last week's meeting, it was very much in everyone's minds that council is dictating whether Lime and Bird are going to be operating in the city, which is far from the truth. And so I think if this sentence would have said, you know, "Meridian city staff has asked Lime to pause operations. It will be a topic of tonight's discussion at council at 3:00." But it was just, "The city's asked Lime to pause operations until mid-March." And my phone exploded like, "Mid-March? We're not getting back till mid-March?" I'm like, "What are you talking about?" I just had to say, "This is news to me. We're talking about it in an hour at council." So, and then got here and had a chance to pull up the email. And yeah, I mean, to everyone who's read this, it's, "Council has said no to Lime until mid-March," which I agree. If they can get their stuff together in two weeks, three weeks, a week, whatever it may be, if they fulfill their requests that we had had originally, understanding that they didn't before, but if they're able to, the time should be irrelevant.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Board.
So maybe to move on to the next topic on this. This is the first I've heard of March 15th, and I don't have a problem with it. It sounds like it comes from what Mr. Nary said. The point of the last week's meeting was to get these problems fixed, if they're fixable, and get the right people in the room to address them. And if that takes one week or one year, the goal is to get those things fixed. And hearing this discussion of March 15th, it sounds like from your meeting that you had, you thought that date along with the winter weather might be the date. So I don't feel any sneaky purpose behind it. If it could have gotten posted after this meeting, when you'd come here, describe, "Hey, here's where the meeting, here's what took place. We all put our heads together in realization of all the challenges we've got to solve and everyone who has to be in the room, coupled with the winter." Boy, it could be Halloween, but realistically, in their experience, it might be March.
Sure.
That gets told to us. We all probably nod and say, "Great idea," and you're in the same spot. So maybe cart before the horse, at least with the release, but it still gets you to the same spot that realistically, this is probably March unless mountains are moved in October, which would be great if possible. But that's my take on it. So it might have gone out early, but it's still the same end result. And I appreciate the focus on making sure every part of it is done correctly with all the right people in the room. So when it is rolled out again, it is successful for everybody. So.
And Madam Mayor, Counsel, Counsel, Mr. Board, I'll fall on the sword on this one. From the context of, yes, it was.
Stop you there. There's no sword.
Well, but, you know, I do oversee these issues and I oversee, I look at the stuff that goes out to the city. And I, you know, rightly or wrongly, I view this more as an update to council. And yes, it was, since we had an agreement with them, I did not expect this to be an issue in the terms of the time or the presentation, since the parties that we were working with had agreed that, yes, let's work towards that timeframe. But hindsight, you're 100% agree. It could have waited until 5:00 and asked for our communications manager to send out the newsletter at 5:00, post this conversation.
To that point, there's no sword. I think that context, from what I hear, really helps. And it's hard to put all that context in probably whatever was posted, right? But there's also, there has to be a good degree of trust and faith in us that you're going to go through all of those steps to get to the point of posting something like that in the first place. So the order might have caused confusion perhaps with the public for sure.
Surprise.
Among us. But I get where you're trying to go. So I think there's a sword to fall on.
Any other questions? Item 8A is under our Public Works Department annual update.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of council, let's shift gears. Let's talk about water and wastewater and the excitement going on in the Public Works utilities. So I am very pleased to be in front of you today, representing the professionals in the Public Works Department and offer you up a 2018 annual update. We've adopted the movie theme this year as our backdrop for our slides and whatnot. So with that, we'll march on through. So the activities that we thought we would share with you today is I'm going to walk you through kind of what we're calling the nominees for Best Picture. And what that really is, is we're going to share with you a lot of the various accomplishments and things that have occurred over the past year. And then we're going to pass it over to our division managers who will gladly share some of the challenges that we see coming down the road in an area that we call coming attractions, and then conclude our effort this afternoon with special awards and some credits. So in the meantime, we're going to salt in some facts and figures and those kinds of things in our effort. And our hope is that you'll have a few wow moments as we walk through our presentation. So, starting with the Business Division, what we'll call their nominees or efforts, we're going to talk first about communication, education and outreach. And this is a department that's made significant steps the past year. We were so excited to hire Shandy into our department, and she's really taken the reins and run with some of the effort that had been advancing rather slowly. I've listed here a number of things. We've developed and implementing the communication plan for the department. We've done some excellent effort on our newsletter, which is one of the things that we're trying to do as we communicate across the 24/7 operation, multiple locations, and really trying to keep our employees engaged in what's happening on the Public Works front. We've initiating a number of website improvements. And one of the highlighted pictures here is the third grade tours. We have the pleasure of sharing Public Works with over 2,000 students as they come through the tours here at City Hall. So a great outreach effort that we have a lot of fun with. Furthermore, you saw the introduction of the Public Works project map this year. That's getting good use where we are able to communicate exactly those areas of impact on our community. We're doing a lot of improvements in our project noticing. So we are trying to reach out as we touch citizens in their areas and impact them on what's coming, when we're there, and when we're finished. A lot of effort on the social media front. And you'll see, obviously, the 10th Annual Public Works Week where we had another successful campaign, over 1,000 citizens joining us. A lot of those are children where we give them education as to a very important role that Public Works is playing in the community. Environmental programs.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to interrupt what I'm going to because I think it's important to just share the work Shandy's doing on social media, engaging the public, specifically about the plastic recycling. You don't find a lot of healthy collaborative conversations on social media anymore. And that's a place where you're really seeing it. And I just wanted to credit you and Shandy for continuing to communicate with the public. There were some hiccups on the rollout, and the accountability from the city was great, and this willingness to engage with the public was superior. And I just, before you moved on, I wanted to make a special note that I see that happening, and I know that our citizens really appreciate it.
Good. Thank you, Counsel Cavanagh. We will pass that on. Shandy is joining Casey and they're over at Boise State, working on ways to improve public communication even further. So we'll certainly pass that on. And so.
But Dale, I guess, just to add on to it, and we talked about this when we met last week, but how the departments are interacting with Shandy and sharing information, making what Public Works does interesting, engaging the citizens in it from the number of fire hydrants to the number of miles of underground pipe and those kind of things. You do have people that are now engaged in an entertaining way. And who would have ever thought Public Works was entertaining? So that Shandy's working with each of these divisions to really get that information out there and to make it interesting is exactly what the goal should be. So it's fun, and I have been surprised at how many people are engaging in that.
Good. Thank you, Mayor, for the comments. And we do have fun. So it is a fun topic in a weird sort of way, but it certainly suits our fancy. So, thank you. Environmental program, we got a, here's another one that we saw several challenges on the front of environmental and opportunity to improve those efforts. You know, our program, we started this year and kind of rebuilt, redesigned the overall plan, includes, you know, not only the obvious environmental items, but flood plain, stormwater, sustainable operations, education and outreach, solid waste, and obviously here more recently, you know, recycling. So it's a growing program. It's a complex program, and we're pleased that we're making progress on a lot of fronts. Certainly one more recently, solid waste. You're going to be hearing more about that in the next few weeks, but that's becoming a very large and complex issue. We're making great strides on the fronts of energy conservation, and we have a multi-discipline team within the department that's looking for opportunities to move forward on the energy conservation front. So one of the departments that, we're just going to kind of give you some facts, Asset Management and GIS, which is part of our Business Division, is really a critical backbone for our department, both utility operations and our engineering effort. And as you'll see on the slide here, we've got a number of, you know, large numbers starting to show up. We have over 100,000 assets that we have characterized and attributed, and we're managing those assets. Work orders and the effort that we do to maintain that system is also coming out of our IPS. And I'm pleased to say that 90% of our efforts are proactive in that front and that we're doing the work to maintain that reliability that we expect. 110 project drawings have gone into that database. And so there's just a substantial amount of work happening in this area, and we wanted to acknowledge that. Facilities management. We thank you for your support and allowing us to reorganize a little bit and dedicate some focus on the areas. That brought to us a dedicated project resource this year. We've been making great strides on both maintenance projects as well as project management efforts. Some of them that are listed here certainly are the ones that are the TIs that we've supported community development on, fire and police projects, which include a variety of topics from roofs to mold remediation to a variety of things, ADA compliance projects that were successfully completed. Welcome to Meridian signs identified there. So we have a lot of traction occurring in both our maintenance and our project management areas. And we're very excited about the advancement in that, and we appreciate your support of that. Workforce development, this is an area that, you know, we continue to invest in and invest wisely in our department employees. We now have over 50% of our employees on staff that have been through our internal leadership development program. That's a collaboration with Boise State and gives us the opportunity to give them some basic education and training in accountability and team dynamics, continuous improvement, problem solving, communication style. So really, really a valuable foundation and allows us to communicate with our employees and invest in them. We participated in the city's PEAK program. There's a few of us this year, and we hope and know that there'll be more coming down the line. But in advance of that, we worked to develop a four-class continuous improvement course and curriculum with Boise State and worked 22, 22 of our key managers went through that program this year to learn about the fundamentals of continuous improvement. And that's, and we believe that's obviously the way to do business. Professional licensing and training. We have 66 staff who require those kinds of credentialing, and you can see that on the chart here as well. So we're making investments to make sure that our people are qualified and skilled to do the important jobs that you've entrusted them to do. On the financial front, I hope you were pleased with the budget that the department brought forward to you. Alex and his team spend a tremendous amount of time. We're a large budget. It's very complex. We continue to optimize in our efforts. The CFP ties very closely with that and really is our normal time horizon anyhow. We have to be looking out 10, 12 years on our operations and capital, staffing plans and things in order to stay ahead of it. So we've recently submitted that CFP. I think the department did a great job, and you'll get exposure to that here soon. Constantly looking at rates, fees, and how we balance relative to our revenue expense sources. And as you're aware, we look very solid here for the next several years. And here a little bit later, Alex is going to talk a little bit more about what the future holds as we look down the road. Within this team, we've got some analysts working on some pretty cool projects that have yielded some nice benefits. One was the SCADA SWAT effort, which helped us to, you know, define our SCADA program, what resources are necessary, and how do we move that program forward. And that resulted in some organization changes, and we're moving down that road, and it'll be a guiding effort for some time on that front. The fleet analysis, something fairly simple, but going out and seeking out from other organizations how and what are the best practices for managing that fleet. And the results of that were nearly a removal of almost a half a million dollars of replacement from the previous schedule that we were working on. So it does pay. I guess time will tell, but we feel confident in how that process worked out. On the engineering front, we've obviously, you know, have a lot of things going on and a lot of things that did occur. Here's a slide that, just some facts about engineering. They managed a very large portfolio of projects and efforts this year totaling 70 projects, total capital value of about $40 million. And that, you know, we're pleased we're at full staff now, but that's a complex and complicated portfolio to be managing. As we were seeking to get to full staff and as we look at the landscape of the labor market, we were faced with some real challenges. And this team took it upon themselves to be proactive and went out and, I guess, accomplished a couple of efforts to try to gain some excitement around the engineering careers that are associated with Public Works and held and premiered the dream big movie, which we had several hundred high school students attend. And also during the education efforts during the engineering week this year, where we had a lot of students come out and share with them and allow them to tour the facilities and understand more about what the world of engineering is and how that relates to the Public Works Department. On the actual water projects front, we highlight here that our master plan for water was completed and updated. We're currently defending our area of drilling concern efforts that we had from last year. We've got a couple of water projects that have or will be coming online very shortly. Added 12,000 feet of mainline piping and extensions. Also in our Also, in our replacement portfolio, a couple of big projects replaced about 7,000 lineal feet of water mainline, added a couple additional pressure reducing valves, and I believe we now have about 26 of those that are helping us to balance water pressure through the five zones of the city. We also added improved SCADA controls on those PRVs, so we have better sight on what's happening at those locations. We completed, or are in the process of completing, our fourth water treatment facility, and that's the one that's at Bear Creek, and that'll be coming online here within the next 30 to 45 days, and we're in the design and stages of our fifth one, which is over below Black Rock there at Teutonic Avenue. On the wastewater side, also completed, or nearly completed, the facility plan, which helps guide the work facility, capital investments down the road, critical lift station specifications have been standardized and designed, I and I studies that we continue to do help direct us towards where we need to be looking at in terms of our maintenance and repair, and making sure that we're not processing groundwater that's finding its way into our wastewater system. But the highlights of this area certainly are the liquid stream capacity project, the headworks and the Boise River Outfall project, which replaced a lot of pumps, seal water and efforts, and we look forward to inviting the council out here in the next 30 days to take another look. I know we had an opportunity to go out at the plant last spring, I'm telling you, it has really changed, and it is very impressive when you, when you walk through now and see, you know, the various buildings and process equipment that's now in place as we, as we move to have that particular project completed, you know, late next fall. Just a few things on the wastewater side, we added 9,500 lineal feet of mainline sewer, that primarily was the Black Cat Phase 5, which took sewer down Meridian Road to the, to the south, and we have one more leg, Warren will talk about that, that'll kind of complete that, the rest of that effort. We also added 4,100 feet of mainline sewer as part of the ACHD Pine Project that you've seen wrap up here recently, and a very important project to upgrade the pumps at our Black Cat Lift Station. Almost a third of our flow goes through that one lift station, so it's very critical for us, it's performing well, and so that was a good project to get, to get wrapped up. Streetlights is a all-in-all-out program that we now have, and when you start considering that we now have exceeded 7,000 lights in the city that we're responsible for and managing, we added 580 streetlights last year through both development, city projects, those things. Actually, the city concluded a number of projects, six to be exact, that culminated in the addition of 82 lights on some of the critical safe walking corridors and things that represented a almost $400,000 investment, of which a third of that was the money that you've approved through enhancements, and the balance of that was the grant monies that we were able to leverage. You'll also see that we're pretty excited about the fact that we're bringing in the conversion over to LED lights, we now have almost 1,700, so all new lights going in, our LED, any that we touch and replace are also going to LED. That, that bodes well, as it consumes about half the amount of electricity of a standard streetlight, and maybe equally, if not more important, the reliability and the life of those lights are significant, such that the, the amount of maintenance on those is substantially reduced. So, great, great program, great to have Al heading up that effort and really managing it, and we don't see, we don't see any stoppage there. I will highlight that the little screenshot that you see there is that we are in the final testing phases of a streetlight map, which will be available to citizens as they, as they report outages, so they'll be able to go to the map, find the, find the streetlight, click on it, and report it as an outage. So stay tuned for that to be coming here very soon. Our inspections team, there's no group that feels growth probably more than this team. Again, we appreciate your support for additional FTE, and I hope you will recognize that in that graphic that talks about the number of inspections, that that position was dearly needed and is, is paying significant dividends. This team inspected 277 projects this last year, and that's a substantial amount of work. We're very proud of their efforts for the year, and, you know, I guess we'll stay tuned to see if that, that growth continues, or if we, if we see this taper off a little bit. But they're, they're a busy bunch, they have to work, if you will, at the, at the pleasure of the developers and things that are constructing these projects, so they require an awful lot of flexibility in their scheduling and things to be able to be there when they need to be on these projects, and ensuring that that infrastructure is going in right and will serve the community for years. On utility operations, as I kind of wrap up my section, here's kind of one of those wow pages, so the mayor had mentioned. So you'll see that we're almost, we're headed towards 36,000 customers in our water department, we've added 1,700 plus, you look at 16,600 valves that we're having to manage and exercise, and, you know, that's an example where GIS comes in, we got to know where every single one of those valves are at, buried in the street, so that we have access to that. Approaching 600 miles of pipe, we should be there next year at this time, and for the year pumped 3.4 billion gallons of water, and just to kind of bring that home a little bit, we figured out that we could draw a bath for every man, woman and child this side of the Rockies, and that's, that gave you a little order of magnitude on what 3.4 billion gallons means, and that's assuming 50 gallons for a bathtub. So, a lot of 68 million baths worth of water that we, we pump out. The water department completed some critical activities of the year, updated and completed all of their emergency response planning efforts, the operation and management of three water treatment facilities, which were critical to our Zone 2 and some of the challenges we're having, and that in conjunction with the enhanced or accelerated flushing effort, we've seen a significant reduction of about 50% of our water complaints associated with those quality items, brown water, cloudy water, those kinds of things. So, knock on wood, we think that we're, they're certainly headed the right direction, and our treatment facilities and flushing programs are paying dividends for the community. They also had a significant DEQ inspection that came in and reviewed the entire water department's effort, and they were 100% compliant without violation on all fronts for that inspection, and so an excellent accomplishment by the water group. Wastewater, a few facts to chew on there. So, here was, here's your miles of pipe, we, we added about 19 miles of wastewater pipe this last year through the projects, obviously a number of those are developer-driven. You can see the graphic that I just picked the month of July, and I said, let's just look at million gallons per day happening in those months of July, and you can see the climb, that's going to suggest we're going to be over 18, or excuse me, 8 million gallons a day next year when we update you. And interestingly, as we, as we look at the declining balance reports, if we approve nothing more, we have 13.5 million gallons of flow committed in the developments that are out there plotted and waiting and ready to go. So it is very good that we're making progress on our capacity expansion, that'll bring that facility up to 15 million gallons a day capacity. It'll be, none too soon to, to gain that capacity. On the, on the wastewater operations front, you know, we've completed our first full year of MPDS compliance with our new permit, and they have done so flawlessly, we've met all guidelines as required, also went through a significant compliance inspection by DEQ, and came through that without incident as well. The capacity and headworks projects have substantial requirements to tie into the existing processing system, and that takes substantial coordination by our operations team, and every one of those has, have been done virtually flawlessly and without disruption to the process, and that's, that's not without the significant effort of our operations group at wastewater. Also, wanted to point out that we did, as you're aware, last fall, get a new MPDS permit that authorizes us, excuse me, a reuse permit that authorizes us for the next 10 years to continue with our reuse water program. Idaho asset purchase for the power lines was completed and successfully navigated, and so we, we own and operate the distribution system out there at wastewater, and are doing so at a substantial cost avoidance of the facility's charge that we had in our bills. Talk about a group that's seeing the effects of the new permit, thought we'd throw down just a, just an idea of the kind of workload that our laboratory staff is supporting along with our operators in order to meet our compliance testing, and also the knowledge and awareness of what's happening in our operations. So thousands of tests occurring in our laboratory on an annual basis, and I can see by some smiles that you've, you focused in on the, on the rag ball 2.0, this is part of the digester 5 cleaning project, so we have two, you know, two large digesters on the solid side, and obviously things get through, these are very large tanks, and we had to clean one of them this year, and it, it was quite a challenge. The little harpoon you see there was developed by our maintenance group, and it's kind of a harpoon that goes down in and helps extract some of the rags and materials you see, so I think that they're pretty proud there of the effort and the victory of getting that stuff cleaned out of the, the digester tank.
I, I think that beat the two, two-ton hairball.
Actually, this is, this, that was a question I asked, and this is actually smaller than the, than the, the earlier record.
Hairball.
Rag ball. There may be a little hair in there too, so, anyway. So that's, that's my part of the program, and I appreciate you allowing me to share a little bit of the things, brag a little bit on a lot of the efforts that are happening, and I'm going to turn it over now to Alex, and we're going to walk through, just very briefly, some of those things coming down the road that we want you to be aware of, and under the topic of coming attractions.
This is a trailer then, right?
Thank you Dale. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Very pleased to be here to talk just a little bit about the business and administration teams. Very proud of the effort that these, these two groups do to support our utility operations. I'm continuously impressed by the amount of work that they get done on a regular basis. So with that, as Dale mentioned, we're going to go into the coming attractions, which is really just our look at what's coming down the pike at us, short-term, long-term items. So we'll start with financial planning. You can expect our annual rate model update this winter, we plan on bringing that to you, and in that discussion, you'll see our latest 10-year projection for the enterprise fund balance true up against the latest budget growth and CFP numbers. It will show that we still have a funding challenge out there in years 2028 and 2029. Strategies and recommendations will be presented at that time. One of the items we will talk about at that presentation is our pending EPA fee that is actually scheduled to sunset in 2024. That's four short years away from a planning horizon. So, we garner about one and a half million dollars of revenue a year from that fee, so it's not insignificant. That'll be one of the items that we'll discuss when we talk about the rates and fees, and what the future of that fee might look like, and potential strategies to close that gap that we send, that we see at the end of our 10-year plan. On other fiscal fronts, the business division will be busy working with priority-based budgeting, that's the project that finance is leading, and will continue to work on improving our overall budgeting efforts, reporting capability, and in looking for efficiency to stretch every one of those dollars that we collect from a rate perspective. Our business programs team is busy, one of the primary focuses is solid waste management. This is going to be a major initiative going forward. Through our efforts this past year, we've come to realize that this needs a great focus and probably more directed resources. We've done some analysis, and some recommendations are going to be coming before you very shortly on directions we think we need to take to continue to focus on those efforts. Our sustainable operations team has been stood up, we're looking forward and very excited to see what they're going to be able to provide from an energy conservation, energy efficiency, and cost-saving measures. This group is also tasked with working through our continuous improvement efforts. Having identified key performance metrics for the department, the team will now move on to reporting and fine-tuning what that data is telling us. We look to try to have a dashboard system in place so that our division managers will be able to use that data and actually drive their businesses and improve processes, and that team also works very heavily with each of our divisions on analysis, they do everything from fleet analysis or turn-on investment, so there, never a lack of things for that group that they're, they're working on. And then finally in that area, on the workforce development, Dale mentioned our LDP program, we're excited, our next set of students will be going through that this winter. The LDP program for the Public Works Department is really kind of morphing into a workforce development program at this point. These are critical skills that we're trying to instill in our, our team members to help them with the absolute crazy pace that, that things are happening in Public Works, providing them with skills enhancements and problem-solving, critical thinking, team dynamics, these are critical for us to be successful going forward. Our asset management and GIS teams remain busy. As Dale mentioned, we have over 7,000 streetlights in the city now. That asset group needs to be added to our asset management software, so that's one of the major initiatives they'll be working on going forward. We need to capture all those assets, categorize them, so that we can generate proactive work against them and cost tracking. They're also working very hard on ensuring that the data that we bring into our asset management program is quality, the old adage, garbage in, garbage out, that still applies, so we have to make sure our data is accurate so that the decisions that we're making based on our asset management plan are accurate and effective. On the GIS front, we're going to continue to work on shoring up our accuracy of the existing infrastructure that we have throughout the city. This speaks to the ability of our mapping software to actually be able to pinpoint where those buried assets are in the city, and in another major effort going forward there will be on real-time data collection from field personnel. This should help make those efforts easier and faster, and any time that we can save staff time saves us efficiency and ultimately money. And then finally, on our facilities management and capital projects team, as Dale mentioned, we've managed to start to diverge that group a little bit. Up till now, they've really been kind of a combined effort on facilities management and, and project management. Now that we have them somewhat separated, we're able to kind of focus on the facilities management side of the house, which is really going forward are going to be two main things. We've got adding facilities in our city, and then we've also got trying to maintain the aging facilities that we have out there. We're looking to develop a full facilities master plan that will guide us through the next five years. We'll look at this plan to define things like level of service for city facilities, standard operating procedures for how our maintenance personnel operate, response plans, and we'd like to sync up all of these efforts with the city's growth projections so that they're working off of the same data that the rest of our departments are working off of. We also are going to be looking to add those facilities assets into our asset management software as well, which at this point we haven't done. Most of the work orders that those Most of the work orders that those folks work off of are manually generated. So once all that data is into our asset management software, a lot of that stuff can be automated, giving those folks more time to focus on actually doing the work of our maintenance teams. On the project management side, we're super happy to have our project manager engaged. She's focusing on two things, new facilities that the city is adding based on the growth. Fire Station Six is an example there. But she's also working on projects that will address aging infrastructure needs for our infrastructure that may need to modify based on what the emerging needs of the city are. Couple of examples of these might be space planning for city hall as we continue to expand. Potentially parking issues. I know we're always dealing with those kinds of things. We may be bringing for you in one of the future budgets, a look at city hall plaza. The brick and cement out there may need rehab work. So just some examples of some things that are coming down the pike that, that we're looking at from the facilities and, and capital projects team. So that's just a very quick, high-level view of some of the things coming at you from the business and administration teams. I'm going to turn this over to Warren now to talk a little bit about the engineering and the inspection staff. So Warren?
Thank you, Alex, and good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to take just a few minutes and give you a snapshot of what's coming down the road for the engineering and inspection work groups and what's going to be taking up a fairly significant amount of our time. So we'll start with the water side of things. Rapid growth is one of the major driver, driving forces behind much of what I'm going to touch on today. As the valley grows, demands on our water supply will increase. Administering and protecting the city's water rights that we already have is going to be essential and ongoing. Flexibility, mitigation, availability are some of the words that I would use to describe some of the efforts that we're engaged in now with regards to our existing water rights. Making sure that we have the flexibility to use those at the right time in the future is important and there's ongoing efforts all the time regarding that. We're also going to be planning and taking steps to ensure that the city has the water that we need in the future by evaluating options like a reasonably anticipated future needs application to the Department of Water Resources. We are protecting the source water for our wells with ongoing efforts as well. We have been working diligently with the Idaho Department of Water Resources as well as other stakeholder, stakeholders to ensure that well drilling practices as well as well abandonment practices are protecting our aquifer from human-introduced contaminants as well as naturally occurring contaminants in our aquifer that we're, we're trying to keep those from spreading into the portions of our aquifer which we draw water from. In some areas of town, as you know, it is difficult to find naturally occurring water that is of sufficient quality to meet our customers' needs. In these situations, we are constructing facilities to improve water quality to our customers and to meet their, their customer satisfaction needs. As Dale mentioned, treatment facility number four is under construction. Treatment facility number five is in design and there are five more treatment facilities in the 10-year plan. We are also working to construct and expand our distribution system in a manner that will allow for reasonable and reasonable growth and to guide growth in the way that we would like to see it move forward. So these are some things that are kind of impacting both the water and the wastewater side. I'll touch on them and then I'll jump to the, sort of the wastewater side of things. Engineering and inspections have also been working diligently to fulfill the commitments made as part of, as part of the South Meridian annexation effort. The final phase of the sewer line construction in Linder Road and the final phase of the water line construction in Victory and Ten Mile are both planned to be started in 2019. So we, as of 2019, we will have basically completed those, those commitments that we made when we annexed all those properties in South Meridian. Last year, in a presentation to council, I took some time to talk about the challenge that was coming our way with regards to serving sections of Southwest Meridian, our Southwest Meridian impact areas, well as the McDermott Road area. This is still a looming challenge for us, both from the standpoint of logistics and timing and cost. And we are going to be initiating the design and construction process in 2024. But as you know, there's a lot of development pressure in certain areas along that corridor and that, we'll, we'll see how that impacts things as we move forward. But the, the plan is still at this point to start the city-initiated projects in 2024. Deteriorating infrastructure and the huge cost associated with that is a concern for many, many cities across the US. Although most of Meridian's infrastructure is relatively new, it will eventually need to be replaced. The timing of that replacement and how it is funded is something that we are currently evaluating. We want to make sure that Meridian is prepared when that eventuality comes. And we know that we don't want to be in the same position as some of our, our neighbors to the east. So we will be bringing back a presentation to the city council sometime in this coming year that will share with you what we have found out and essentially propose some options and alternatives and seek your direction in helping us to adequately prepare to make sure that the city of Meridian is prepared to address this issue when it comes our way. And you can look forward to that. Okay, now I'll touch on some of the wastewater side. Much of our efforts for the next few years, as you can imagine, will revolve around the ongoing expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. Once the current liquid stream and headworks projects, projects are complete, renovation of the old treatment plant will commence as will expansion of the solids side of the process with an additional digester. As a side stream phosphorus removal process will also be constructed as will an enhanced tertiary filtration process. As flows and loads continue to grow, the sec, and the second phase of our NPDS permit approaches, we will also have to build additional aeration basins and we will have to look at addressing issues like temperature. So you will see in the, in the little snapshot there of some of the 10-year plan, some of those items and they are significant and costly. But we will be addressing those and, and designing and preparing for those. In order to facilitate these efforts, the engineering and operations teams are regularly evaluating new technologies in hopes of discovering the most efficient and most cost-effective way of meeting our needs. We are also working to obtain a second access to the wastewater treatment plant. We've spoken to you guys about that a little bit before. This will not only make ongoing operations and constructions more, and construction more convenient, but is necessary as the square footage of buildings that we have out at the wastewater treatment plant breaks the threshold required by the fire department that we are required to have a second access. It's been challenging. It's been difficult to find willing partners whose conditions to work with us haven't been too onerous. But we are making progress and we do anticipate that we'll soon be able to come to you with additional information as well as possible solution for that. As you saw in the slide that Dale shared with you, the bar graph of the inspection team and the work that they've been doing, that workload has been growing substantially with all the development that's taking place. The sheer volume that they're dealing with is substantial. In addition to the number of projects that this team inspects, there is also an increasing demand for the field data to help facilitate the work of other groups like GIS, Acela, Asset Management, Operations and Engineering. Developing SOT, SOPs and processes for these workgroups and the, and the sharing of this data takes time and training. It also, this group also has to deal with the constantly changing construction methods and technologies that come into play as well as the changing in specifications and our design standards. They have to constantly be educated and keeping themselves up on that. And they also have to work to educate our contractors so that our contractors are installing and constructing things in the manner that will give our citizens the best quality and long-term value for the infrastructure that's going into the ground. And as you might imagine, scheduling and resource allocation is another challenge as contractors often want to work late nights and weekends. So scheduling is, is a big challenge. We also have inspectors that occasionally want to take a vacation with their family. So this is always a, a, a difficult challenge for the inspection team. It's just managing all the various times that they have to be available. And last for me is streetlights. So as indicated in the previous slide, the streetlight program is, is an expanding work area. This past year, we realized that power lines that run from our meters to our light pole runs had not been being located when Digline called in and requested utility locates. But they should have been. So to address that, well fortunately, we hadn't, because many of these are co-located with other utilities, we hadn't had any significant events. But we realized that that's something that we needed to address. And so we have been working with outside help, getting a contractor on board and working with our purchasing department to get a contract to provide utility locates for the power lines associated with our streetlights. And we will be able to here in the very near future, when Digline calls, we'll be able to appropriately respond and get out there and mark those because this certainly represents a significant liability to the city that we want to make sure that we, we close as soon as possible. So we're working on that and we're making good progress. We're also working on a long-term plan for streetlights that will address the location of new lights as well as the funding, options, inventory, maintenance and technological innovations as we move forward. Al, who's our transportation utility coordinator and administers our streetlight program, has also been working diligently with ACHD and ITD to improve coordination and collaboration on roadway projects that we believe will result in increased cooperation as well as, as funding for streetlight projects that we do or for roadway projects that include street lighting with those two agencies. And we're excited to see how that progress or how that effort on his, his part will, what results will come from that. We believe that there's some, some projects that'll be coming down the pike where we'll see some, some better collaboration on streetlights and, and actually be able to provide more streetlights and we'll be able to leverage the money that we have even more effectively. So with that, I will turn over the time to Boralai.
Thank you. Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for giving us a few minutes of your, I guess it's now evening. So I've spoken to you quite a few times over the last few years about advancements in laboratory detection levels down to parts per trillion and beyond. With these advancements in detection levels, there's also been advancements in studies completed by EPA around safe levels of constituents in our drinking water. The great news for Meridian is that we have plentiful clean water in our aquifer. However, we regularly watch the regulatory horizon for new or lowered health advisory limits. And it's important to note that these aren't regulatory limits, but we still strive to meet these to protect all of our citizens. The good news, Meridian's drinking water is below these advisory levels and our proactive installation of the treatment facilities that both Dale and Warren have talked about are a big part of why we're there. You'll continue to see advanced drinking water treatment as a trend around the nation as we maximize the utilization of the precious resource that is water. In support of that, we'll be completing several important additional steps in the water division to prepare ourselves for continued growth and regulation over the next few years. Oops, sorry. One of those will be completing the UCMR4. What that is, is a nationally required set of samples that EPA requires for new constituents that they're curious about that we have to monitor for. So that'll be a big sampling event that we will take place next year. Another improvement is the abandonment of old wells, like Warren talked about, that do not produce water quality that meets our standards. Proper well drilling and abandonment is a critical step to protect our deep aquifer from many of the contaminants that we just discussed. We have previously abandoned three wells and you'll see future enhancements to abandon two additional wells. These are generally older wells that were drilled without the standard methods that we drill today's wells with. Another big step that we're taking to keep up with advancing treatment technologies is the requirement for, for all of our water division operators to obtain an Idaho Drinking Water Treatment One or higher license over the next year. You may have cringed at this math and chemistry, but that's what's on these tests. They're certainly not simple, but we're committed to getting our staff through this as a group over the next year. We're already putting together internal training classes to help all of our staff members succeed. These licenses not only ensure our staff members hold the minimum required levels of knowledge to operate our treatment facilities, but they also bring professional distinction to our staff in the city. With this added value over the next few years, we'll need to continue with HR to look at our organizational and compensation structures throughout the utilities to ensure we keep and retain our qualified, highly-trained, highly-licensed staff. This coming year, we will also finalize our corrosion control treatment study. So understanding the specific water chemistry and its interaction with the pipes in our system is really critical for us to provide safe drinking water. Pipe corrosion due to specific water chemistry has become national news a few years ago and the regulators are reacting to that. It is an obligation of large water systems like ourselves to study and understand the impacts that their source water has on the pipes in their system to ensure no harmful contaminants are leached from the system pipes. The large systems must also study and develop proactive treatment strategies to employ if corrosion is found to be a concern either now or in the future. This study represents a move towards best practices and is proactive rather than reactive, which is where a premier city like Meridian should continue to be. We are currently working with Census, our water meter provider, and we have a great opportunity to evaluate an AMI system over the next year to better understand the value of this type of system for our city. An AMI system could improve our automated data collection and endpoint customer service and is likely the utility service reading and billing of the future. With this system, we could eventually be able to see real-time water meter data from our base station rather than having to drive to each specific meter in our system. We could do things like leak checks and final reads from our main office hub. It will be exciting to evaluate the costs and benefits associated with this system in the coming year to make the best decision for the department and ultimately the citizens. In our water utility, it's really exciting to see Meridian on the forefront of further educating our staff, conducting important proactive studies and continuing to evaluate and install treatment technologies to allow us to continue to provide safe water for our citizens now and into the future. So something that touches both of our utilities is our SCADA system. It's an essential program element for both. We've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. I'm pleased to announce that we are making progress on filling our SCADA and instrument tech positions. And over this next year, this team will be busy learning and improving our system, which will further reduce our reliance on outside contractors and improve the robustness and reliability of our ever-growing SCADA network. Instrumentation and automation only continues to grow as we add additional wells, lift stations and treatment facilities, both at water and wastewater. Planning on how to keep up with this new automation, integrating it into our system and keeping up on ever-evolving technological trends will be an important part of our upcoming SCADA master planning efforts. In our wastewater utility, we also show a pace that is not slowing anytime soon. We have made significant progress on our current construction projects as both Dale and Warren mentioned, but we have to start planning now for the next phase of upgrades that will be required to meet our final permit limits in 2026. To do this, we will begin retrofitting our existing plant nearly as soon as the new plant comes online. Tying these two plants together and learning how to operate them in parallel will be a significant challenge for our staff over the few coming years. You'll see that diagram down on the lower right is our staff's effort to understand how all of those pipes interact and connect. Additionally, during the short window, we'll also be adding a side stream phosphorus removal facility, which will help us form struvite where we want it, not in our pipes, valves, pumps, mixers as it does today. That's the picture up on the top is struvite plugging up our pipes. Learning how to run and optimize this facility will be another significant hurdle for our staff. We'll also be adding tertiary filters and additional aeration basins, as Warren mentioned. We'll also be adding tertiary filters and additional aeration basins, as Warren mentioned. To give you a little bit of an idea about the magnitude of these tertiary filters, I wanted to put this diagram in here. So as you can see, a human hair is 50 to 100 microns across. Our current filters at the plant are 10 microns, which are proportional to those little blue dots. The new filters will be even finer than the little red dots, allowing us to remove the trace amounts of phosphorus and other constituents to meet our final permit limits. These new facilities will give us the treatment capacity and detention time to treat down to the ultra-low levels that are required to meet our permit limits in 2026. Learning how to operate and fine-tune what will essentially be a brand-new facility operating in parallel to our older plant is a daunting task facing our operators and mechanics. We'll need significant training and additional staff resources to meet these new demands. As such, we have begun the move towards 24/7 staffing at the treatment plant. Thanks to your support for an additional operator this fiscal year, we will be able to reduce the unstaffed overnight hours at the facility by two hours each day. To fully reach 24/7 staffing by 2020, we conservatively estimate an additional three staff members, two operators, and one mechanic will be needed to cover these new shifts. As the facility grows in size and complexity, the permit limits become more and more stringent and every single minute counts towards meeting compliance. These new staff members will join our talented operational and maintenance crews in keeping our facility running 365 days of the year while meeting these increasingly stringent limits. Speaking of new limits, we will be faced with a permit renewal, which may add new limits or lower some of our limits in 2022. I know it felt like we just got a new one, but another's coming. However, we're lucky several of our neighboring cities get to go first. And our operations and engineering teams are watching closely and working collaboratively with them to understand the changing regulatory horizon and its potential impact on Meridian. As Warren mentioned, one of the issues we're watching very closely is with the temperature limits that the City of Boise and City of Nampa are faced with meeting in the near future. It's important to note that Meridian does not have a temperature limit, but if we were, it could have significant financial and operational implications. So both City of Nampa and City of Boise are considering innovative strategies to deal with these limits, such as looking at variances and looking at producing Class A reclaimed water to be utilized in irrigation canals. Both of these strategies are newer to our state and have not been approved yet, but as I mentioned, we're actively engaged in understanding the limitations and opportunities for Meridian around these topics. I would like to mention another one of our teams that's been significantly impacted by staff changes, our collections team. Since early 2017, we have had seven staff members leave out of a team of eight people. This means a lot of transitions, hiring, and training has been occurring in this group. We've found it very challenging to retain some of our entry-level positions in this highly competitive job market. Unfortunately, this has also slowed down our cleaning and TVing goals since you can't operate the vehicles without the people. We're continuing to work on getting caught up and back on the established schedules. Getting this group staffed, keeping the equipment up and running, and catching back up will continue to be a high priority for the wastewater division over this coming year. In closing, there are four major themes that I think resonate for the two utilities that will keep us extraordinarily busy over the next few years. One, keeping up with increasingly advanced technology. Two, learning how to operate new and complex facilities. Three, more stringent regulations. And four, challenging staffing resources and new advanced licensure requirements. With your support, we'll continue to tackle these challenges as we have in the past. So with that, I will turn it back over to Dale for some closing remarks.
Every time I get done looking at what engineering and operations and the other groups do, I'm just stunned and proud to be part of a team that's able to manage, you know, a $38 million revenue, $36 million expense, capital complexities. We just have an excellent team with the capability to manage this in a very professional way. And so I want to just take a moment. We've got some special recognition that we want to acknowledge. So one that you're familiar with is that, you know, Alex was honored with the Supervisor of the Year for the city. Jason was also honored as an employee for the city. We have a number of individuals and teams that were recently recognized in our department each year during our annual picnic. We have peer-nominated projects and individuals that we try to acknowledge. And you can see a very distinguished group of contributors to the department. Don Case was voted the Employee of the Year. Chip Hudson, who I think is the longest-tenured employee in the City of Meridian. As supervisor, you can see some very deserving teams. We talked about the challenges that have been met by inspections and the maintenance team at wastewater, the conclusion of the Black Cat 5 trunk sewer in the Bauer Street parking facility was even acknowledged. One of the more worthy and notable accomplishments is Adam and Jason, who took this year's cornhole championship at the picnic. And that's significant because they did dethrone a two-time champion in their efforts. So also, the kickball award-winning was water, but that decision is still under review. So we've got some regional winners. We've got a couple of folks at wastewater, Nate and Keith, who were acknowledged for their respective professional areas by SWOS. We have a number of individuals who've achieved elevated certifications or licensure milestones. And you can see the names here listed. I do want to, I guess, point out that just as recently as Saturday, Travis Cassar, our wastewater superintendent, achieved his third required certification at the Class IV level. And he now is one of four in the state that has that distinction of having that level of licensure. Of course, Lorelei is one of the others that we're pleased to have on our team. But that's a substantial accomplishment by Travis, and we certainly congratulate him on that front. He hit the trifecta, if you will. And finally, you know, we acknowledge some of those individuals, but it really does take a whole team to deliver the kind of effort throughout the year and allows our department to contribute to the premier city of Meridian. And so I'm proud to present the Public Works team. So I think what they say is, let's roll the credits. Alex was going to sing for some music background here, but we decided. Thank you for allowing us to take a minute and put a face to all that effort. So with that, we're done and would be happy to stand for any kind of questions. And I've got the great expertise in the room that'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dale. And great information. It is mind-boggling at times to really absorb everything that your divisions are handling and juggling and doing so well. So thank you again to each of you for what you contribute to the success of this department and for a job well done. Council, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Camer.
Another question, just a quick comment. I was fortunate enough to be the Public Works liaison for the past year. And honestly, I was really intimidated when I was assigned Public Works. And I really just want to credit Dale and your whole team for investing in me as a council member to make sure that I was educated on what was going on within your department so that I could be a better asset. I think Councilmember Little Roberts is taking over and you can't ask for a better department. The evolution of Public Works over the past four years has just been remarkable. And I just attribute to your leadership and the culture in the department and really all of your staff's commitment to excellence. I really think you're a gold standard for a Public Works department in our country and I appreciate your great work.
Good. Thank you for your nice comments and we'll make sure our team hears that.
Thank you. And no questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Portman.
I'll ask you one. Two, really, can you email this presentation around to us?
We can, absolutely.
It's great data in there. The earlier slide, I think it was on Warren's, the deck that he presented, had the growth-related capital expansion plan at the treatment plant. And is that sequence of improvements budget-constrained or is it sequenced in a manner to match our growth projections? Meaning, would we do it quicker if we could?
No, actually, the bulk of those major expenses are sequenced to the permit requirements and our capacity requirements. So we start with that and kind of work our way back to confirm that we have the proper revenues and budgeting, you know, in the proper years. So those are matched to when we need those investments.
So, Madam Mayor, doing them earlier isn't, wouldn't be part of the plan if revenue was available?
It would not be part of the plan necessarily, no. And in fact, some of those opportunities that Lorelei referenced, as we watched some of our neighboring cities prepare for their next permit requirements and some of the more innovative options, could even suggest that we may have the opportunity to delay or defer portions of those investments, which we would obviously choose to do if we could. So right now, we have a base case on how we plan to achieve the MPDS compliance requirements. And that's what's reflected in the current CFP and our solvency projections as a department.
Which, on that solvency, you will need to have further discussion.
Yes, we will. We'll be back because as Alex indicated, we've got, although we're very solid for the next several years, when you look out in years nine and 10, and actually 11 and 12, we're anticipating another substantial investment required for both regulation and growth. And that has yet to be considered in our funding modeling. And so that's what we'll be back to talk to you about. It's probably prudent that we start thinking about that sooner than later.
Perfect.
Well, thank you and thank you again. We appreciate you being here and even more so, we appreciate all you do. Okay, Item B is under our Finance Department.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, council members. The update that are revisions that I'm presenting to you for consideration, which will be next week, I am told, but for discussion today is going to, will help the Public Works team actually accomplish things a little bit quicker. What the changes that I'm proposing are very minor. They are essentially just taking advantage or complying with the new state statutes that were passed in 2017. So we are below the limits that the statutes currently allow, and this is going to let us move up to take advantage of what is allowed by state statute. I've sent you a couple of emails and then gave you a draft policy to review. There was one change in one of the emails that I sent. The last one that I sent did have a change in the Pub Works construction dollars, which I'll go over with you. But essentially, the policy is going to comply with statute. And statute essentially tells us when we can go out for an informal bid versus a formal bid. That's what the statute really tells us. Anything underneath that informal bid process is set by the city. And I have some recommendations in here for that as well. One change for Public Works bonding, the statute does move up to a $50,000 threshold. What we tried to do when we changed the statutes back in 2017 is we tried to make a $50,000 flat line all the way across. So then agencies and employees wouldn't have to guess, well, is it 25 here, is it 30 here, is it 50 here, is it 100? So we made it a flat $50,000. And that's where the statutes first take place or discuss requirements of agencies. For goods and services, where the statute allows us to require just-written quotes up to $50,000. And then from 50 to $100,000, we must issue an informal bid. Those are issued by purchasing. And then at $100,000 and above, the formal bid process must take place. That's where I am recommending is that we move up to that. Currently, ours is at $25,000 is where the informal bid process. We're going to move that from 25 to 50 and then take that up to $100,000 for informal bid and $100,000 or above $100,000 will be a formal bid process. Currently, staff has to get three written quotes at $10,000. Of course, staff's always trying to get us to bump that up as high as we possibly can. I'm recommending at least moving it to $15,000. If council has any other recommendations. As you know, in today's dollars, $15,000 even doesn't get us very far. But that's a starting discussion point for obtaining three written quotes. For contracted services, that is going to follow that same dollar limit as goods and services. Quotes are required at $15,000. Three written quotes from 15,001 up to 50,000. And then an informal bid or RFP process will be from 50 to 100,000 and a formal bid process again at 100,000, which all complies with state statute. Public Works Construction bonding, previously bonding was required for every project that you let. And it was not practical at all. If you had a $1,500 tile job out here in the lobby, you'd have to get a payment performance bond. And a lot of sureties won't even issue a bond for that small of a dollar amount. So it was irrelevant. When I called several years ago, I called the state Public Works manager and asked his advice. And his advice was use common sense because the statute didn't address it properly. The statute now addresses the payment performance bonds at $50,000. I've discussed that with legal. They also agreed that that should be a starting point so we're not spending money on bonds on the projects that are least likely to have problems with. The bigger problems are, of course, where we have issues with payment performance bonds. So that's where we should focus our time. Public Works Construction, currently, we have quotes required, I believe, I have to go back and look at my original policy here. I believe it's at $10,000. And we're suggesting that we take that up to $25,000 for construction as a minimum. That again, I hear from Public Works staff telling me that $25,000 isn't going to get them very far, but it's better than $10,000 that we currently have before you have to get three quotes. So anything above $25,000 to $100,000 will require three written quotes. From $101,000 to $200,000, that will be an informal bid process where we just send it to three contractors. We don't have to formally advertise it. And then anything over $200,000 will be where the formal bid process begins. So that in a nutshell is the changes and the reasoning behind it is just to comply with state statute. I will state- I will state that we are the last agency. I did a poll from the Idaho Public Purchasing Association, I'm still on the board, and everyone else has implemented these changes without any issues at all. We are the last ones to implement, but I thought it's not a bad idea to let everybody else go first and see if it works out as well as we thought it would, which it has. So, with that, if there's no issue or questions on this, I am on vacation next week, but I believe Bill could put a resolution together to put it up for a vote next week. I have had several projects that are coming up and I've recommended to the project manager to wait and see what happens with the purchasing policy because it will affect some of those projects that are in the queue right now. So, with that, I stand to answer any questions?
Thank you Keith. Questions from Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Briefly, Keith, can you kind of explain to us what the difference is between a formal and an informal bid?
They are the exact same document. I use the same document. The process is the only difference. With an informal bid, you only need to select three vendors or contractors and send it to those three. You don't have to put it up out in the open. And then a formal, we advertise, we post it on our website and we leave it up for a minimum of 14 days.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Comments, concerns?
All right, I will ask Bill to put a resolution together for next week and we'll bring that for you next week.
We're known as followers here in Rhode Island.
What was that?
Thanks Keith, good job.
Thanks.
That he was a leader on this.
I will also state, we are working on a couple of very minor changes for the upcoming legislative session that we might bring next year as well, a couple more small changes, but all that's to help everyone get through the process quicker. Thanks.
Thank you Keith. Item 8C is an update, maybe a couple hours later than I first asked for it. Hi Charlie.
Hi, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thanks for the opportunity. Just a brief update on Fire Station Number Six. If this works. Okay, well, following up from the last presentation that I was in front of Council on September 11th last month and the discussion we had around the schedule, we are proceeding with the original timeline as opposed to going with the quicker timeline that we had talked about. So, with that, we did have a design and budget review on September 18th. It was with the entire team, the design team, construction team and the team from the city. It was a very productive meeting. We continue as we move through this process, evaluating the budget and looking for places for cost savings. So, with that, continuing in that process. Right now, where we're at, engineering and finalizing the construction documents this month and into next month, a couple examples, emergency signalization that we're gonna put on Overland Road, the design of that along with the permit from ACHD takes a little bit of time, but we're working through that this month and next month. Also, Idaho Power, it takes them about six weeks to turn around their engineering for the structure. So, once we have a pretty good design of the structure and what equipment's gonna be in the structure and what kind of power is gonna be needed for the structure, we can give those plans to Idaho Power and then they design the size of transformer and the kind of feed that they need into a building like this. Another area for value engineering that we're looking at right now is the landscape plan. So, initially, the plan was given to the landscape architect. The landscape architect created his plan of the landscaping around the building and we've taken that back now to our team, both our internal design team, city team, and looking for ways to cost save, to save costs. Within this, there's so many trees that, for example, have to be on the property this size, but we recognized that he had about six more than what was needed. So, through that value engineering, we said, well, let's reduce some of these trees and save some money, but still end up meeting code. Towards the back of the properties, you can see on this particular slide, a lot of area, the landscape architect had put in perma bark, which is pretty expensive and we recognized through value engineering, can we just put in some natural grasses in that back area? It'll probably end up being an area where the firefighters will practice flowing some water into and they're just gonna wash perma bark around if we put perma bark and perma bark's pretty expensive. So, through some of these conversations and this engineering, we're saving costs and identifying some ultimate needs that are gonna be best for the property and for the fire department. So, as we move forward, next month, we will be applying for a building permit through the city. We should have our final construction documents done next month as well. Final bid packaging, we'll head out early December and head out to all the subcontractors for their review and for them to put into their bids into ESI and then looking for a bid opening in January. So, again, a pretty brief overview of where we're headed, but that's really where we're at right now during this month, next month and the couple months ahead. So, with that, I'd stand for any questions from Counsel or the Mayor.
Okay, Counsel, any questions?
Thanks for the update.
Thank you for the update.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks Charlie. Item HD is the Clean Indoor Air Ordinance Discussion.
I'm gonna go down there, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the Council. It is, it's a lot easier to talk to all of you down here than over there off to the side. As you all may recall, a number of months ago, we collected a full host of ideas or proposals, things that Councilmembers had a desire to work on and address and we kind of established a thing what Council President Borton has called the parking lot and we have been slowly chipping away at a number of these ideas. As you may recall, we've talked about post offices and we've talked about how we do elections and parking and a whole host. Some of those have come with an ordinance, some have just been staff updates and this is just a further evolution of these conversations that we've been having about implementing a clean door air law. A little bit of background, we in Meridian first started hearing about this around 2011 when I was actually an employee here. In 2014, there was a coordinated letter writing campaign to the Mayor and Council. The Mayor provided an update in her blog and on the Meridian Press, talking about it was something that Council would look at. In 2017, we asked our citizens in the citywide survey their feelings on that. Seventy percent of our citizens said that they support implementing a clean indoor air law. So, this is something that the Council has looked at over the past six, seven years and I think before us today is a question of do we want to explore language? And I guess my request would be is we've kind of talked about this idea of let's present an idea. If there is some desire amongst the Council to look, in this situation, maybe getting some language crafted with the Mayor's approval, myself or other Councilmembers could work with city staff to come up with language that we would bring back to you in a month or two months, give everyone an opportunity to look at it, review it and then invite that out for a public hearing. So, no action really today, just more direction from this Council. Is this an issue that we want to look at as a body? And if so, then we can start laying out a timeline. Again, not saying that you are in favor or opposed, but more do we want to have that conversation at the City Council level?
Thank you Luke. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. Palmer.
What would be your kind of anticipated results of the ordinance? What would it do?
Sure. So, Madam Mayor, appreciate the question. I think it's also important, I think all of you are all aware, but I think it's also important to put on the record, I work for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. In my capacity with that, my job, I work with municipalities across the state to implement clean indoor air laws. I've talked with Mr. Neri about this. Whether the city of Meridian takes action or doesn't take action has zero impact. I won't receive any financial incentives, nor will they fire me if the city of Meridian chooses not to move forward. But within that capacity, I think I've got some expertise and so, but for me, I don't want this to be Luke Cavanagh's clean indoor air law. This is something that if that's something the city wants to do, I want to collaborate with all of you, those that are in favor and those of you that may have some opposition to it. We could bring something back, I think, as soon as probably 30 days. If this is something that there's a lot of involvement, it may take longer. Again, the city's been talking about this for eight years. I see no reason to rush it and bring something back quickly. Rather, I, if this is something the Council wants to do, to be pragmatic about it and do it right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, so what would the law do if it was whatever you wanted it to be?
Sure. So, Madam Mayor, and this can be something we could talk maybe more in depth in a public hearing to hear from our citizens, but a little background. A number of years ago, I believe in 2010, the state passed a clean indoor air law, which essentially says you can't smoke indoors. Within that law, there were two, what I would consider loopholes left and that's for bars and businesses that don't serve the public and employ five or fewer people. Now, that, to me, the only example that I can come up with is you own a business, like an eBay business, you're selling stuff on eBay and you don't face the public, you would essentially be able to smoke in your place of business if people aren't coming in to purchase your products. What most people think about are bars. And so, and if I had my magic wand, I think the direction that I would want to look at is something that's comprehensive. So, if you serve the public, you can't smoke, whether it's a bar or a bake shop, a barber, again, and Mr. Palmer, perhaps it's because I spent my time as a bartender in college, I look at it as a trade and I think that we need to be providing the same type of protections to employees regardless of the trade that they serve.
Madam Mayor, so you're in, your draft that you would possibly come up with would just be that scenario, not necessarily, like you mentioned, your eBay business or, the reason I ask, that intrigued me is because, you know, we had the room full of people confused about SENSIE. So, if, you know, if you operate a SENSIE or whatever business out of your home, do you anticipate that kind of thing or just if you're serving the public?
So, Madam Mayor, I think that's a great conversation. What you have seen is, again, a business, so a retail business, not necessarily a business that is operated out of your home. Now, if you, as we, we've heard from some individuals during our conversations, there were people that were selling leggings and had turned their garage into a retail store. Well, I think there's some other major code issues about that, but that aside would be a public facing business, in my opinion. I would want to get some direction from legal. Sorry, Mr. Coles, I touched a button. But to me, it's, you know, if you are a public facing business, you would be included in this proposed ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Miss Mylum.
From my understanding, if you employ anybody, five people or less, so the, I think the main, your main concern is for the employees, not the business owner who has no employees and no public. If you're just doing eBay on yourself, you don't have to employ anybody and nobody comes to your house, I don't think that counts, right?
And Madam Mayor, I think, sorry, Madam Mayor, I think this is, these questions are great and is not necessarily the scope of today's conversation. It's more to see, is there some interest? Do we want to answer those types of questions? Again, while I've worked with municipalities across the state to say, here's what we would call some best practices or some model language, we as a City Council, it's up to us to determine what we think is best for our community. Number of weeks ago, we voted to enact a non-discrimination ordinance. We didn't just copy and paste another city, we took it upon ourselves to craft language, whether we supported it or not, that best represented our community. I would see this as no different.
Madam Mayor, so personally, I'm admittedly against this. I think it's a law that is just a law for the sake of having a law for the most part. It has such a small scope of effectiveness on the number of businesses and it's kind of giving, we've had these conversations before about allowing businesses to make those decisions for themselves and since we are only talking about three or four maybe businesses in the entire city that we know of that serve public, now I'm not talking about the one that may have the one employee or whatever, but the bars. The people that go there, go there because that's allowed. The people that work there, work there because that's allowed and there are hundreds of other bars and restaurants that they could employ out without being affected by secondhand smoke. So, I've done the research because this came up several years ago and so I went around and I talked to the business owners and I talked to the staff and that was the feedback that I got. I know that if I want to go out and I want to not smell like an ashtray, I go somewhere that doesn't allow smoking and that's my prerogative. Also, the people who do want to go there and smoke somewhere that's not outside in the 10 degree weather have that right and the business owners have that right to serve them. So, that's where I stand on that.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I had a question to start with, but I think it's more if we get as far as having a conversation. So, I do tend to agree with Councilman Mylum that I think we've got the situation where the laws have taken care of such a large percentage that I think we're down to the minutia and may not need this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm open to seeing a draft. I appreciate you saying that, you know, the plan isn't to just rush and do it. I've heard that before, so I'm really hoping that that's the case because I, just sitting here, I mean, like you said, it's not really, the point is to have this discussion, to go into all the details of the ideas, but I have some ideas and some more or less questions as to what may or may not be possible with it that I'd like to explore and contemplate a draft and, I mean, we had a public survey where the majority said they didn't want it, we did it anyway. Now, we have a, in the same survey, a large majority of people who said they do want it. So, I think it's at least worth contemplating a draft and seeing, putting it out there to get the public's input on it.
Oftentimes, I think that depends on how you ask the question. There's just a handful of businesses, would they have answered the question differently?
Madam Mayor, I think you bring up a great point. Just for context, while I was not involved in this because I was working for the city of Meridian at the time, Smoke Free Idaho conducted a survey amongst our citizens. 68% at the time said that they supported it. The same question was asked again in our city survey and it showed a 2% increase. So, I think the response has been consistent that there is the vast majority of our citizens that are saying they would support something like this.
Madam Mayor.
Miss Mylum.
And I agree with you and I understand the points on the survey and the percentage of people, but the thing is probably 90% of our citizens don't smoke. So, the people that are answering the questions aren't affected by this either way. They're not affected now, nor will they be affected if this law was enacted. The people that are affected are not the majority, so they could never have a majority on the survey. But those are the business owners and the people who tend to frequent those establishments. So, I think, I think somebody who it doesn't affect answering that question for somebody that does affect isn't quite the right way to fix that problem either. Like, I make decisions, what you can do, but I'll do it.
And Madam Mayor, the goal tonight was not to defend or present scientifically validated information to support why this is a good decision, why it supports, I think, our citywide strategic plan, et cetera. It's more just to say, is this something the Council wants to take on? As I mentioned, if there is desire, I'm happy to work on it. If there's not desire, as Mr. Borton can attest, we have a large parking lot of issues that we can, we can choose to focus on. But I would look for direction before moving forward one way or another.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Portman.
You know, Councilman Burton's not here, I don't know what, if you had a chance to visit with him, I don't, quite frankly, know, I don't know what I don't know on this issue. That being said, I'm supportive of the process of this group having ideas vetted. So, I don't know if I'm, really would be supportive of not, you know, the state found some data that was compelling enough to restrict it in certain environments, other cities have found it compelling enough, there's, you know, I like to see the data behind it, pro and con, there's city survey that... Pro and con, there's city survey that is of some value of what our community might want, depending on the question that's asked. So, all of that piques my interest. So, I probably would want to learn more and maybe see a draft to what Ty is talking about and learning what other cities have done.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
And I agree. I mean, that's the reason we do this, and I've brought things forward, and you're like, hey, yeah, let's talk about it. And it still didn't go through. So, I'm okay talking about it and with the process, but I just wanted to give you an idea of where it was coming from first. I don't think data is going to change my mind, but you never know. And I'm totally open to having the conversation and having a public hearing and find out how the public feels about it.
So, Madam Mayor, I think then, what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure that I'm, I can appreciate sometimes the challenge of staff to hear a handful of different information and wanting to make sure that the direction is accurate. Perhaps I can work with staff to come up with some model ordinance language that I could circulate to council. Perhaps either myself or someone else who works on this issue could present to council and at least answer some of those questions, specifically Councilmember Borton. A little more history about the state, why they made the decision that they made, and at least provide some greater context. If after that, if there's not a desire from the council to move forward at that point, we stop. If there is, then perhaps we schedule a public hearing with more additional information be provided before we would ever render a decision. Does that sound sufficient? And recognizing that this might not happen in a three-month span, this may take longer. It may, we may hear from Councilmember Burton and say, I've got no desire to address this, and I would feel comfortable at that point not necessarily moving forward. My goal tonight was just to say, is this something as a council we want to look at? And if the answers were at least open to looking at it, let's do it. If they're, say, we don't want to look at this, then let's move on.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess, another thought, I just, I don't know if it is good to spend a lot of time creating an ordinance when the ordinance, if we were to move forward with anything, might be crafted through our conversation. So, if you have an ordinance that some, isn't what we, I mean, you could always amend it and change, you know, obviously wouldn't be going through that day anyway. I just don't want to see you and staff waste a whole bunch of your time. You know, we might say, well, okay, we'll do it, but it's for businesses with, or employees, you know.
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum, I hear where you're coming from, and I think it's a chicken and the egg scenario. It might be, to your point, not necessarily fruitful to spend a significant amount of time drafting what I think the council wants, but to at least start with maybe something generic that say this.
This is already down there.
This is what other municipalities, we have, I think, twenty-eight states in the United States that have a statewide no-smoking law. About eighty-three percent of municipalities across the country are covered by a comprehensive law. So, we can pull what other cities have done. There's a small handful of other municipalities across the state that are having these same conversations in their council chambers. So, I could be, bring some of those kind of boilerplate. And, Councilmember Mylum, to your point, if there's a change that this body wants to include or omit, we at least could have a starting point.
Well, and staff resources, I have to also talk to, I know Councilman Borton did the lion's share on the NDO, and there was some review from the legal team, but also to see what their workload is and what kind of time constraints or what kind of time you will need to help with this. So, I think everyone's plate is full and where this would play in the priority of that and how much time is actually needed.
And, Madam Mayor, I think it's difficult for me to say, not recognizing the workload of the legal staff that this would take five hours or fifty hours. I think that we, again, my goal is not to have legal staff spend a significant amount of time researching all of that stuff, but merely to provide that, again, best practices that other cities across the state have done for their review. Sounds similar to maybe how we began with the non-discrimination ordinance, merely to bring back some boilerplate for council to discuss. And if at that point the council doesn't want to move forward, then it's been very little time of the legal department. If there's desire at that point for the council to want to continue to move forward, then I think we would want to engage the legal staff a little bit more to make sure that it falls within everything else related to Meridian code so that we don't have any issues as we get to the public hearing point. We're very fortunate Mr. Borton is an attorney. I'm not, nor do I try to play one on TV. And so, relying on a resource like the city attorney's office or something like this, to me, I think would fall within the scope of what a council member would ask of legal staff. I don't think it's an out-of-line request. I don't anticipate it being an incredibly taxing request on legal staff. And I think that we all as a council feel that if that's the direction that we're hearing from legal staff is that something as boilerplate language for model ordinance is taxing them, I think we as a council would want to hear that anyways, because I think that may be more telling of a overall larger work issue for our legal department.
Well, I do want to make sure the majority is interested, and I do want to touch base with our city attorney on workload. And we can follow up during our one-on-ones and follow up next week with council.
Okay.
Did you get, hang on a second. Did we get some general direction, or do you feel like you got some direction?
No. Well, I thought I did until we heard that we're going to come back and talk about this again next week. So, I thought we had a plan, but now I'm hearing maybe we don't have a plan. Sorry.
I think I need to know what kind of workload it is and how that fits within our city attorneys. And I didn't hear a high priority on this. I heard we can take some time. So, I need to look at time resources and see what, what that does to a timeframe.
Madam Mayor, for my interest in it going forward, the "I don't know what I don't know" part, you might have data available that might not be Meridian-specific, but it might be from the health benefit to municipal organizations and savings and protection to employees. I'm just winging it what there might be out there, but whatever data you have, that might be ground-level data that piques the interest of your municipality to say, oh, there is some unknown dangers, perhaps, to this segment of our community that I'm not aware of or we're not aware of as much as we could be. Sharing that, you know, you might have that available. You might be able to send that to all of us to look at that might have some impact on interest.
Number one, preventable thing we can do to stop cancer. The average household spends six hundred and forty dollars a year to cover cancer-related costs in the state of Idaho. So, there's, I think there's some compelling arguments to be made that I make on a daily basis. Again, I think that's up for this body to say, are those issues that we want to weigh in on?
Bring it, is the new secondhand smoke.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I think if there's, if there's a third of a body of lawmakers that are interested in seeking some help from that body's attorney in drafting a law, I think even if there's not a majority at the beginning saying, yeah, we're interested, if there's more than one, then, I mean, are we lawmakers or are we just here to pass the consent agenda and talk about stuff? I think he wants to get some help in drafting an ordinance for something that, like you said, eighty-three percent of other municipalities have done. Why the crap wouldn't we look at some language? Just coming back to talk more about data. I mean, we can have meetings until forever. I mean, we can all stay in office for probably a long, long time just having meetings. But he wants to move forward with some language. Let's put it together, and then the rest of us will have something to look at and say, okay, I might be interested in this if we strike this and add this, or no, we don't want to have anything to do with it. Yeah, we used some staff time, but we found out that we weren't interested in doing what seventy percent of people with one version of the question were interested in this discussing.
Alls I'm saying is we'll come back with some kind of a timeline. Once I do know, I've never created an ordinance, so I don't know what that means. And my resource is sitting at that end, and I would like to chat with them, and then we can bring back a timeline to this body and see what the thoughts are.
Madam Mayor, it probably makes sense for your office and Mr. Cavanagh to work direct and Mr. Nary to talk about that as well. I would thank.
Definitely do that.
Great. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you. Under item E is, I assume last workshop, you gave updates on anything really burning or pressing or going on in your roles as a city rep?
Madam Mayor, we did. It was outstanding.
I'm sorry I missed it.
An excellent job. So, we could do that again. I think when we did the liaison changes, we anticipated this probably being the last update of any external boards that we were on before. I don't know if there are many changes, now that I think about it, from the external boards, so nonetheless. If there's external liaison committee group updates of importance that you want to share, please do. If not, you can pass. Mr. Cavanagh, the conch is with you.
Thank you, Mr. Borton. Just one thing, because I think from a city council perspective, it's a fascinating process that VRT is going through. So, VRT participates in Percy like city employees, but for a period of time have also had social security taxes withheld as well. So, one or the other. And so, the State Controller's Office brought that to VRT's attention. They are going through that process to rectify, but with that, a portion of the employee contribution, VRT board essentially gets to decide, no, sorry, with VRT's portion, VRT gets to decide what to do with those dollars. Does VRT keep them? Does VRT turn them over to the employee as part of a match? Do they fund a separate program? And the interesting piece about it is that the employees themselves have to vote. Are they going to be part of Percy? Are they going to be part of having their social security taxes withheld? And once they make that decision, then it's up to the VRT board to decide what to do with those funds. So, from a really odd type of sausage conversation, that's what VRT has been somewhat involved in. And it doesn't have an impact necessarily to we in the city of Meridian, but has been a fascinating discussion amongst the board about what to do with these particular set of dollars. I'm, I'm, my mic's on, sorry. Oh, okay. Sure, sorry. And Councilmember Mylum brought up an interesting point, just to make sure we're on the record on that, is that the employees have asked the VRT board to make a decision about what they would do with the dollars before they would vote to either stay in Percy or go back to having social security taxes withheld. So, it's been a wild conversation, and the board, I think, will be making a decision here in the next few weeks. Happy to answer any other questions about that if you want to go cross-eyed.
Interesting.
Mayor, I'm trying to think. There's not a whole lot of exciting stuff. I know that, well, with SWAC, they had purchased those orange bags with the Community Recycling Fund, and that program has rolled out. It's been wildly successful. I think they had sold out in just a very short period of time, sold out of free bags. And there's a question board on a Facebook page for it, which is, it's tons of questions every single day on what could be put in there. So, the community is definitely engaged in the program. Hopefully, it ends up being very successful and the right stuff is getting put in the bags, but it seems like it's really gotten a lot of community engagement. And now you can go and buy the bags from Albertsons. So, I'm assuming there's more participation than just the original fifteen hundred that signed up.
I like how SWAC actually rolled it out so that you had an opportunity to know what goes in the bag. In the grocery stores, you don't have that. And I know that there is a cost when there are things in the bag that are not supposed to be there. So, I really applaud the idea behind the rollout. I don't think SWAC or the city council knew that when this approach and plan were put in place, that we'd have the opportunity to purchase the bags in the grocery stores, or we probably would have done things a lot different. So, but kudos to SWAC. Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, I am the alternate on a whole bunch of items, all of which you attended. I think the Allenbaugh House was canceled at last meeting. So, there's, I didn't make it. Must have made it. So, I don't have any external board updates to provide.
Thank you. Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, we had high hopes from the Air Quality Board that something would take place between the last meeting and now. There was a meeting with the software vendor scheduled, and I understand that today they've had it last, attempted to have it last week and canceled it thirty minutes into the meeting. And now the soft, three of the software people are scheduled to arrive in town tomorrow. So, I'm hoping that by Monday's meeting, because it's been a year since the software was selected, and still no progress, and we're looking at charging our people out in the field fifty cents more a test in order to cover the extra expense that's been ongoing. And so, I'm hoping that Monday will give us a lot more information and a lot having been accomplished this week, because we're reaching what I feel is a cliff that needs, something needs to happen differently.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
For council's clarification and maybe to add to the frustration, I was the Air Quality Board liaison over a year ago. And so, through Councilmember Little Roberts' entire tenure as liaison, this project has been delayed, and I know that we have voiced frustrations about delayed projects here at this level. And unfortunately, at the Air Quality Board, they're taking it to a whole nother level and being delayed. So, look forward, hopefully, next month to good news. That has such a huge impact on all Valley citizens. Really need to get that situation resolved quickly.
On Allenbaugh House, I think there's a looming debate coming on that regard too, as the state has pretty much said, we're not going to increase our funds any longer, and the county has also done the same. At this point, the funding subcommittee is looking at, I guess, seeing if Medicaid would be reimbursable, which is what the county had asked to close the gap of funding. So, those discussions just started. The director of Health and Welfare came to the last meeting to kind of give a state perspective, which is interesting because it really is their responsibility in the mental health. And the two partners that really were the champions of moving Allenbaugh House forward were the county and the state. So, we look forward to continued discussions on that. You're all invited to Boise Valley Economic Partnership Fourth Quarter Stakeholder Summit, which is October twenty-fifth at the Boise Center. If anyone is interested, we can do RSVPs and get you further information on that. They have had an in- They have had an increase in their requests for information, and they have a large number that are currently active. And so they're excited about that, about the opportunity, and they are getting better wage jobs that are, are doing these inquiries. So Compass is considering their tip on the agenda next week. AIC Board met last week. We had primarily, the board meeting was on upcoming legislative topics from IAC, the, the Fire Chiefs Association, the Police Chiefs, and, and the Building Officials Group. So they're, what they're trying to get is from the various groups, the water users groups, and, and those, those, on what they're seeing, anything that might have an impact on cities. We will be having conversations. We have talked to a couple of our local legislators, as well as the council liaison to community development, in regards to some of the challenges that we've had in hiring plan inspectors and building inspectors. So we will come back with a discussion with council, as well as area of impact discussions as we start seeing the elections close, what, what happens in, in the legislature. But we've gotten good dialogue so far on a couple of the issues, such as area of city impact and, and some of the qualifications for the building personnel that we're trying to hire. AIC also, I can't remember what the looming issue was, other than our own, which is area of city impact, and, and we kind of had an impasse with Jerry Mason and his opinion on it. So stay tuned, we're, we're continuing discussions on, on that. Yeah. Oh, yes, and the fireworks discussion might, might be an interesting one as well. So we, we can, I, I did get a handout on that one, and so we'll scan it and email it out to you, so you have that information available. They didn't have anything printed, and this is just a pre-discussion before the legislative meeting that AIC will call in November. The faith ambassadors, we had a faith luncheon last week. Thank you to Ms. Little Roberts for being in attendance. Our, we have a strong faith community that is locking arms and, and working with all of our personnel on various issues to continue to have a safe, healthy community, and so we appreciate their partnership. We had two grant requests last month for ACEM, and it was to round out the, the vision goggles that the law enforcement agencies need, and those requests went to Garden City and Ada County for night vision. And that really is the, the substance of the, the number of different things I'm involved If there's nothing further, we can, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Before we do that, for a few, oh, sorry, Dean, I thought I was on. Maybe, I just, I'm not close enough to the mic, my apologies. Just on, on future meeting topics, to reiterate from my point earlier, it'd be great, perhaps at the next workshop, for us to have a conversation about who and how the city or the council is being represented. I know we're in October, but January will be here before we know it, the legislature will be in session, and I'd like to make sure that we're all on the same page, either in terms of a policy about how, when somebody goes to speak for the city, what steps that staff member or the mayor's offices went through before they're purporting to be representing the entire city. I think our issue this afternoon related to Lyme only reemphasizes the need for us to have that conversation. Second, I'd like to get a, an update from code enforcement. I don't think the council has ever really heard from code enforcement about all the issues that they deal with day in and day out. I, for one, have a couple of, I think, ideas about maybe some changes to, to code, and I think it'd be first important for us to get an update from code enforcement about their work before we have those conversations. Get maybe another workshop meeting, but sooner rather than later would be ideal.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Mr. Borton.
Real quick, I'd mentioned, when you mentioned that, I had mentioned that to the mayor, and I think the idea was, is part of that to have code enforcement kind of come walk through that process of, here are the kind of the complaints, here's how we process it, here's who does it, here's what happens next.
Right.
And educate us on, not only the types of issues they're seeing, but how they handle them.
Excellent.
A second, before we go in, it was just important to note that our finance director this Thursday receives the Excellence in Finance Award, a major award. He's claiming to be, wanting to be called His Excellence. We see him after Thursday, so he might have a medal or a crown of some sort, something to, some outward display of his excellence, so. But Todd is fantastic, as you all know. Well-deserved, it's great, so we're going to be there to help celebrate with him, and he's, and his department are wonderful, so tease him as much as you can.
I'll pick up a crown. Be happy. Tiara.
Madam Mayor.
Sash.
Well, a sash would be great, he would love a sash. Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code seventy-four dash two oh six, one F, one J, and two oh six, one A, A one, excuse me, A and B.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Ms. Clark, we call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.